Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners. This is Tuesday, June 15th, 2021. I apologize for the late start as we had some difficulty getting going. At this time, I would like to notify the public, we have a quorum present, and would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, and again, good morning, fellow commissioners.
Good morning.
First off, on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I would like to amend the agenda and, under other, add a catering permit for the Red Feather Saloon in Green River. Does any other commissioner wish, have a topic to amend the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the amended item. A motion by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the approval of the minutes from June 1 of 20, I'm sorry, yeah, June 1 of 2021. Commissioner, it's your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I would so move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Toman to approve the minutes of June 1, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, under Tab B, is approval of the bills. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers and warrants, the monthly reports, the bonds, and the abates and rebates as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Shanefield to approve the ELLs, monthly reports, the bonds, the abates and rebates. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, under Tab C, we have two public hearing and budget amendments, and here to present those is Ms. Bonnie Berry from the Clerk's Office. Good morning, Bonnie.
Good morning, Chairman.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me here today. We have two budget amendments, as you stated. The first is Resolution 21-06-CL-03. This is a Sweetwater County budget amendment to increase the expenditures in the general fund in land use capital in the amount of $22,606.25. It also decreases the expenditures in the general fund, land use operating, in the amount of $22,606.25. So, we are moving that amount from operating to capital within the Land Use Department. Are there any questions on this?
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Berry regarding this budget amendment?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
What is this for?
This is for the website and the logo design. It should have been charged to capital, so we're doing a budget amendment to correct that, and I will move the expenses.
Awesome. Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions, commissioners? With no further commission, questions, at this time, we do require a public hearing, I believe, for this resolution, so I will now open the floor up for a public hearing for the recommendation of Resolution 21-06-CL-03, budget amendment in the Land Use Department. Floor is open. Floor is open. Last call for public hearing regarding the budget amendment, Resolution 21-06-CL-03. Public hearing now closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding this resolution budget amendment?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith.
I move that we approve Resolution 21-06-CL-03 as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to approve the resolution as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, budget amendment for the health insurance fund. Ms. Berry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Resolution 21-06-CL-04 is a Sweetwater County budget amendment. This increases the expenditures in the health insurance fund in the amount of $450,000. This money does not come out of the general fund. This is a completely separate fund. So, this doesn't change any expenditures or pull any money out of reserves. So, are there any questions on this one?
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Berry regarding this? Commissioner Toman?
Where does the money come from?
That, it's a health insurance fund, so we have a separate fund that's a health insurance fund, and all of the health insurance premiums go into the fund as revenues, and then all of the expenditures for the health insurance claims, because we are self-funded, get paid out of that fund. So, and those expenditures are paid weekly for the claims, and those are the big expenditures. So, any money not used. It was really tight, and this is the last opportunity to do a budget amendment before the end of the year, so we didn't know if we were going to go over or not, but we figured $450,000 was enough to definitely get us through the year, and anything that is, anything that's over and above will just stay in the health insurance fund.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Any other questions, commissioners? No further questions. We will have, we'll have to open up the floor for a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open up the floor for a public hearing regarding Resolution 21-06-CL-04, which is an expenditure increase on our health insurance fund of $450,000. Floor is now open. Public hearing. Floor is open for a public hearing. Last call, public hearing regarding the expenditure increase to the health insurance fund. Close this hearing. Commissioners, your pleasure regarding Resolution 21-06-CL-04, budget amendment. Commissioner Toman?
I would so move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Toman to approve the resolution as presented for $450,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Very good job, Ms. Berry. Thank you. Have a good morning. We'll see you later. Next up, we will move into our planning and zoning, and at this time, under Tab D, we have a public hearing regarding Scott Schinkel, which is a zone map amendment, rural residential to B, which is retail business. To present that, I believe, is Mr. Bingham, our planning and zoning director, as well as, I believe you have a guest here, Eric.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we do have Mr. Schinkel here as the applicant. So, this first hearing is going to be a zone map amendment. It is, the property owner is Scott and Judy Schinkel, who is also the, and the applicant. Legal description, it's a 2.95 acre tract of land. It's located within the southeast, southwest quarter of Section 8, Township 25 North, Range 105 West, and the address is 631 Highway 28 in Farsen, Wyoming, and its current zoning is rural residential. It's in the Farsen-Eaton Fire District, and the primary access is YDOT, which is Highway 28. Cindy, are we okay? Do you want me to pause? Oh, okay. All right, so Mr. Schinkel is requesting a zone map amendment from rural residential to retail business, and this is in accordance with the amendment procedures of our zoning resolution. So, this district is intended to accommodate retail sales of consumer goods and services directly to the customer. I do want to state, in the 17 years I've been at the county, this is the first zone map amendment of retail business. We designed this zone district back in 2015 in our zoning resolution to accommodate for neighborhood types of businesses you could have. When we were looking north of Rock Springs, there was a need for retail neighborhood businesses within the Mountaineer subdivision, so that's what this was intended for, so this is our actual first zone map amendment to that. Mr. Schinkel, what he would like to do there is open up a rock shop there, so to hit those travelers that are going up Highway 28 towards the Wind River Mountains, and if you ever do go down 28, it's the Dome House. If you're familiar with the Dome House that stands out, that's where it was. It was subject of a nuisance violation for very many years prior to Mr. Schinkel owning it. Mr. Schinkel has done a lot of work on cleaning up the property, which we do appreciate. The structure still needs some work before he opens, but we do appreciate all his efforts and what he's done. So, basically, it's going to be under 400 square feet, the business within the existing structure. Mr. Schinkel has stated that if this structure is beyond repair, a new structure will be constructed. So, there's a location of it. It's adjacent to agricultural zoning. It does meet the one acre minimum district size. It exceeds that, actually, the size of it. So, you can see there's a pivot located to the north, to the south, and then there's some rural residential also to the east and west. And there's some pictures, and there's the Dome House there. The existing access does not meet YDOT standards for retail business, so Mr. Schinkel will need, and I have spoken with Darren with YDOT, the transportation engineer, and he will need to upgrade that existing access. So, when we review zone map amendments, we want to make sure they're consistent with the, and compatible with the current resolution. This will provide additional retail businesses in the Farsen area. Is it suitable for existing topography? As you could see in the pictures, it's flat, so it is definitely suitable for, and buildable, and it will provide enough space for onsite parking. As far as neighboring districts, at the planning and zoning, we did have a property owner that showed up, Mr. Eaton, located to the south, I believe, west of the property, and he was concerned. A lot of concerns were mostly the traffic, which will, Mr. Schinkel is aware, and he has spoken also with YDOT, to address those concerns. Does it have adequate public facilities? Through the permitting process, he will be required to show what his potable water supply will be. Sanitary sewer is going to be a septic system, and as far as fire protection goes, there is fire protection ponds within the area located at the intersection of 28 and 191. Shall not adversely affect adjacent property owners. We do not see any adverse effects on adjacent property owners. The request conforms to all applicable provisions. As stated, it does meet the requirements for the minimum district size, and the building will need to pass an ICC or IFC inspection, International Fire Code inspection, for a mercantile type use. And, Mr. Chairman, I did not, still, the only agency comment I did receive, and it's not in here because it was after we submitted the report, was from YDOT stating that Mr. Schinkel needs to apply for a access permit. At the June 9 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, three members were present, and so it was a three to zero vote, and you have the recommendation before you, Mr. Chairman. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. I believe we have Mr. Schinkel here. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Schinkel? Please introduce yourself first.
Good morning, and I thank everybody for their time. My name's Scott Schinkel. My wife and I have purchased this piece of property in Farsen with intentions to move our residents out there at some point and open a rock shop, so that's why I'm here.
Is there any information you'd like to add that Eric, Mr. Bingham, did not add?
No, I think it was very accurate. It's what we taught, basically talked about at the planning and zoning meeting, so I have, since then, visited with YDOT, and I do have, I'm not sure if it's a letter of recommendation, but it addresses the permitting process and what is required of me to do that.
Okay.
It's just a process we're going to have to go through and make it happen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That would have been one of my questions, and is that a condition on the recommendation, Eric, for the YDOT access or not?
It's not. It was not included with that. We will have to address that at the construction permit phase, which we, we have done multiple times up there in the Farsen area. As a matter of fact, we have, it's a temporary petting zoo that's located across from the mercantile, and we were able to address that through the construction permit, so we, it does not, I don't feel it needs to be a condition of this because it will be for construction.
Fine. Thank you. You answered my next question. It doesn't need to be. Thank you, Mr. Schinkel. Commissioners, any questions for either Mr. Bingham or Mr. Schinkel before we open this up for public hearing for the zoning change? With no questions, at this time, I will open up this meeting for a public hearing regarding the recommendation of Resolution 21-06-0-1 for approval of a zoning map amendment from rural residential, which is RR, to retail business, which is B, requested by Scott and Judy Schinkel. Floor is now open. Public comment. Floor is open for public hearing. Last call, public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, your pleasure regarding Resolution 21-06-0-1, the approval of a zoning map amendment.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Toman.
It's Lauren, but I would second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Commissioner Shanefield.
I'll make a motion as presented, or a motion to approve as presented.
We got a motion by Commissioner Shanefield to approve as presented. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Toman. We got a second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion?
I'm excited. There's going to be something going in there. I grew up in Farsen, and it's always just been there.
Yeah.
Well, I'm.
Always been an eyesore, and it's an exciting adventure, so.
I'm excited just for what you just said. Somebody's taken interest in cleaning it up, and, and, you know, that reflects on the county, and we have a few, we have several people in this county that have taken properties and cleaned them up really well north of town, and now, you know, the Farsen area, but just can't tell you much. Personally, I appreciate it because I drive that road a lot, and I wish you the best of luck. I hope it, I hope you can retire doing that.
Yeah, me too.
All right, thank you. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion, commissioners? Without that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Planning and zoning approved.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, everybody, for their time. Just a side note, we've put together a rock show for this coming weekend. There's a lot of things going on in Sweetwater County. It's from 9:00 to 4:00 at the college in the atrium. You're all invited. It's free admission. So, we have 16 vendors, local and out-of-state people coming, so it'll be fun.
It's exciting. We appreciate that happening, you know, with, as we crawl out of this lockdown across the nation, you know, people are looking, not only looking for things to do, but we have people like yourselves who are willing to organize events so the public can get out and enjoy and start being face-to-face and becoming, again, human beings. So, but we appreciate that event as well as all the others and how things are opening up, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You have a good day and be safe. Okay, with that, next up on our agenda will be our county resident concern session, so, or comments, so I guess we will now open up the floor for county resident concerns. So, if anybody has anything, please approach the podium, or if Ms., our clerk Lane sees anything, please let us know. We'll give it a couple minutes. Public comment is still open. We'll give it about 15 more seconds before we close. Last call. Comment period's closed. Next up on our agenda is Commissioner comments and reports, and I would like to start out with Commissioner Toman. Good morning.
Go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, I want to thank all of our donors. We had over 50 of them for our Wyoming County Commissioner Association Conference the end of May. Special thanks to them again. Sally and I reached out to Sweetwater Now and 4 News to also include thank yous on there, and it's a topic I wanted to bring up with the commissioner. Are we okay with doing some of our public notices in that format as well as with the paper? So, something to think about, and if we're okay with it, I think it's outside of our required posting of the minutes in the financials. So, think about it, and then we can have a discussion about that. Commissioner Wending and I attended the monthly federal agency update. The Bureau of Land Management is still holding up the oil and gas leasing because of a study they are waiting to receive sometime this summer. All decisions are also going through their headquarters, so great delays are being seen. Sea Skating National Wildlife Refuge has opened up to the public, and they hosted a lot of young people on school buses in May. Attended the Board of Equalization hearing. I had a special meeting with YDOT, and I think this is something, at some point, Eric, that, or this commission may have to address. I met with Tori Thomas on several issues. The economic development opportunities in Farsen and the valley are very limited, and I feel like we're hitting a lot of obstacles. For example, the $5 pony ride, now, that proponent is going to have to put in a $20,000 access to upgrade that access. It's going to cost about $20,000 for kind of a small operation, and it's going to be the same thing with the rock shop. They have really, really strict rules, and they're very difficult to get around them, and I think it's really hampering our opportunities for any kind of economic development. In a 40-mile zone, 40 mile-per-hour zone, those accesses, by the rules of the Wyoming Department of Transportation, they must be 620, 660 feet apart. If they're in a 70 mile-an-hour zone, it's going to be double that. So, I don't understand how they're going to have to offer an exception. They're probably going to run him to Cheyenne, to that appeals process, maybe to the Department of Transportation, because that access that he's going to have to have is very close to the turnout for the closure of the South Pass Road. So, that's already an access, and then his is not going to be very far from that. So, I think, I see that he's going to see a lot of expense and a lot of obstacles, and I think it's time for this commission to maybe step up and object to the hurdles being placed in front of people who are trying to provide some economic development opportunities. I did also mention the Love's Truck Stop and Ask. Why do they could put a red flasher on that turn so that those truckers coming off of there? Maybe that would, I know the Sheriff's Department and the deputies are trying to enforce it, but you have traveling truckers who are not familiar with the area. They're not going to get the message, but if you had a big flashing stop sign there or stop light there, I think that that might help slow them down a little bit. I also asked for a flasher in Farsen, before you get to that junction, for a slow-down type of flasher. The community has done a survey, and they are going to bring the results to the commission asking for different speed limits through the valley. So, that's something we'll be seeing in the future here. Attended the airport board meeting via Zoom. As usual, great things are happening out there. The new building, metal building is on its way, should be here June 23rd. They're working on the SRE building modifications. They're working on water septic master plan, working on a solar feasibility study, and today we'll see some of the grants that are coming through. So, that's always an exciting, exciting meeting to attend because they're always so innovative and moving and having great things happening all the time. The last thing I'd like to comment on today are board appointments. I really felt strongly that there are term limits for a reason, and I know sometimes we go outside of those, but I, I think they're created for a purpose, and if we have other interested parties, I really truly think that we should adhere to the rules that have been set up for term limits. So, that would be all of mine. Oh, it is not all of mine. Holy cow. The big stuff I saved till last. How could I forget? Oh, my goodness. The nuclear power, natron reactor demonstration project is being proposed, and one of the sites might be selected in Wyoming, either here, Kimmer, or near Glendale. Through our coalition of local governments, Kent Conley has been doing quite a bit of research on that, as well as other things. Coal processing is rising to the top with renewed interest by the governor in CO2 recapture. Terrence Mann is a private group out of Colorado, and they met with the governor, and the governor told them that he has only received five letters since he took office on the subject of coal. So, we need to step up to the plate and have a meeting with the governor on the nuclear reactors, on the coal-fired power plants, and what do we, what do we want? I've put a call into Rennie McKay, his policy advisor, asking for a possible meeting, but I haven't followed up with it because I wanted to run it by the commission, but I really think a letter should be sent and that we should be asking for a meeting with the governor just to let him know what we're doing and what are our positions on some of these things. Rocky Mountain Power and the Public Service Commissioner are going to be receiving requests to update their integrated resource plan to include this natron or this nuclear power plant, and we have got to stay connected. We have got to be involved, which we have been, as far as the coalition in the coal-fired power plant issue, but this is even more important because the power plants are shut down, and the coal production will be devastated by the time they get something else running, and the jobs will be lost, and the new jobs are not going to be as many as what we have now with the coal. So, that is a fight that we need to stay on top of. As far as the nuclear plant, we may have a little bit of a headway because of the water issue. Fort Neal Reservoir has done reserve water rights, so that will be needed for the nuclear power plant, so that might be an opportunity to help us get a head up on that. So, I think it's important that we have a discussion with the governor, that we let him know what we believe on all of these issues because there are so many of them. So, I'm not going to belabor, but I just think it's time that we take some positions and let people know what they are. So I'm not going to belabor, but I just think it's time that we take some positions and let people know what they are. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toman. Any other comments, commissioners? Good report. Commissioner Toman, a couple of things in the last week that I found out is with regard to the natrium. One, the present proposal for a nuclear power plant. It's a, what should I say, a model beginning, but there'll be more to come. So we need to keep that in mind. You know, it's the first one of if it's successful, which they believe it will be, prototype, there'll be more to come. So, you know, we've got to stay on top of it. I agree with it. The other thing to keep in mind, one of the interesting things I was told and have it on pretty good source, but I'll look at it even more is for some reason, these are, don't require water for their processing. Yeah, so which in this state of where we're at, let's hope so. But I don't have that on solid ground yet, but pretty good source on it. So that type of thing. So I thought I'd share that. I've got a couple of things. I think I can help you. We can help ourselves and that occurred this week that I've been waiting for this meeting to share. So I'll share those in my report. Any other commission questions or comments for Commissioner Toman? Okay, thank you. I will go next. First of all, I'll pass down to all of you a two, three. Should have four of them here. Anyhow, here's three. I'll find the others. Water report for you as commissioners to take a look at. I thought I had five of them, but I'll pass four of them down. Does talk about levels and that type of thing and take a look at them. If you have any questions, we can go over them. And that's so the second thing I'd like to hand out to you, we received from Mr. Slaughter, the through the bank, Southland Royalties bankruptcy settlement. I'll pass down to each of you what those totals were that were spent out and it's a total of $13,720,000 and 741 cents from that bankruptcy settlement. As you all recall, we hired special attorneys to work with in the courts to collect that Ad Valorem tax that hadn't been paid over a period of time through the bankruptcy from Southland Royalties. We were very fortunate due to the work of our legalese, not only the county attorney's office, but also with special hired attorneys. Just a few of the things to point out, this isn't all of them, but I do have a copy if anybody wishes. The payments going out just to the county general fund is 1.8 million plus. County hospital, 120,900 plus. Events complex, 220, $2,500,000 plus. The library, 243,000. County museum, 27,900,000. Mental health, 58,929. Of course, big winners in school in Ad Valorem is always education and that type of thing. And the state school foundation got 2.4 million plus dollars. The mandatory county wide school fund got 1.24 million dollars. School district number one general fund received 5.1 million. School district two general fund got 1,649 primarily because Southland Royalties housed in school district one area. And school district one maintenance recreation special got $207,000. And there's a number more for the college, Bo C's. Womcider Cemetery, there's a whole list of it that equals that 13,000,000.7 hundred thousand dollars from the bankruptcy royal payments. I did have an opportunity to talk with our treasurer, Rob Slaughter. And as they prepare things, the checks will probably be going out sometime after July, I believe. And Rob's here. So Rob, would you like to comment on that? Please introduce yourself when you come up to the podium.
Mr. Chairman, Rob Slaughter, Sweetwater County Commissioner, Sweetwater County Treasurer. I don't think I'm a commissioner. Morning commissioners.
Good morning.
Just saw that you were talking about this and wanted to let you know we are going to do a special distribution for this money. I've received several calls from entities wondering why their revenues have been, there's been a shortfall this year. So I've got my staff calling all of the entities that have been affected by this along with if you'll remember in House Bill 159, the past last year, mineral companies were given the opportunity to pay taxes in five installments rather than in the two we typically have. So we have had major payments that have been delayed and have not come in until after we did the distribution in June. So we've got money on hand for several of these entities. And so we just made the decision this morning to try and mitigate that for all of the entities. We're making phone calls, letting them know that this week, the end of this week and the first part of next week, we'll be doing a special distribution to get that money out to them before the end of the fiscal year. So, so we will get it to them. Typically by statute, we would not have to do this until the first week of July. But simply with all of the things that are going on in our office and the way things have been handled through these, through this legislation and then this, the special payment that we received, we felt like it would be appropriate to do that. So, so we'll handle it that way and get the money out to them before the end of the year.
Thank you, Rob. I'm sure all of them will appreciate it, especially at this time, their needs and that type of thing. So tell your staff, thank you very much for their work. And also Dave Devis has been a big part of helping with all of this and that. So everybody's pitched in and I think we have to be very, very fortunate that we recovered this bankruptcy money because it could have gone the other way just as easily. So special thank you to our county attorney's office, Danny Armas, being our civil attorney, John DeLeon, for their work and also they, they found good experts to help us recover this and work through. Because this, I believe court proceedings took place back east, if I'm not mistaken, southeast.
It was in Delaware.
Delaware, thank you. So anyhow, any questions for Rob regarding the Southland Royalties commissioners? Okay, thank you, Rob.
Thank you. Just wanted to.
I appreciate that.
Where we wanted to do that. Like I said, we just made that decision today.
Good decision. Thank you. Have a good day. Okay, moving on. As we all know, the report for the South or Middle Baxter grant came out and in there was for SCDC and, and the entities for letters of agreement. And Eric through his office and SCDC is working on those letters of agreement with different partners. One of the partners that is, was looking over the report as it was presented, requested a special meeting with myself to sit down and talk about the letter agreement and the report. And that was Simplot. And so I sat down with their manager, CEO. And we had a conversation and they, they had some concern with the letter agreement as well as the report. And I sat and listened and reminded the manager of Simplot. Slips my knee. Yeah, Mr. Pizzato, thank you. Anyhow, Mr. Pizzato and that, and what I told him is, you know, that's a report. It's a living document. So as we conversed about the things that they, they just wanted to know more information and have more conversation. My reference to him was that they need to, Simplot, review that report and look at everything that they would like to have a conversation. And then I would set up with the parties, i.e. the leader representation on SCDC of Rock Springs, Sweetwater County and Green River. And sit down with Simplot and go through what their concerns are in that report, as it's reported. And try to come to some resolution so that letter of agreement could continue to move forward. And as soon as they finish, what I call red tabbing that report that, that involves them to let me know. And I would get, I believe, from the city of Rock Springs is Tim Como. On the SCDC from Green River is Reed Clevenger. And then from the county would be SCDC with Eric and I believe Lauren, you sit on that board. And then I as liaison and we'll sit down with those partners as well as with Simplot. Will involve our legalese from all four entities and as well as engineers. And the reason I suggest engineers, public works director, Gene Legursky for the county and that is Simplot said, hey, in this report, there are options that we know of that can save money. And we need to discuss those rather than follow the exact report. So with that conversation, just to let you as a board know that dealing with that report as we move forward for Middle Baxter, we will continue to work through it. We'll sit down with those partners and keep this board appraised and where we're at as well as any of the other partners that as they look at the agreement for Middle Baxter, especially going forward with phase one. And then as we move into phase two, there'll be some conversations, I'm sure that'll have to happen as well. So I just wanted to share with you that that occurred the Thursday after our last board meeting when I sat down with Mr. Pizzato. Do you have any questions for me, commissioners? Commissioner Shanefield.
I have a question for Eric and just wondering and for you if, if there's been any other of the partners that have had any concerns.
So the airport board signed it and Joint Powers Water Board also signed the letter cooperation. I haven't heard back from our SGA. That's the only one. And the city of Rock Springs was okay with it as far as I know and Green River was okay with it. So I think we're just waiting for our SGAs to sign after the city's actually signing it tonight, City of Rock Springs.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and if, if any of them do, it's important we sit down with them. But I, I think as we sit down and listen to their concerns, I do want to involve our, our legalese from the county. Only because as we move forward, I'm sure there's going to be MOUs that are going to have to be prepared. And I think I would like it on the basic beginning and start building it rather than guess and spend a lot of time and later on. So there's a reason to move the direction we're going and that type of thing. So we'll, we'll continue to move forward and I'm sure we'll look for Eric to keep us updated as well as Lauren, you with the board, okay? Any other questions, commissioners? All right. Thank you very much. The other thing on my report, and I think Commissioner Toman, I, I, everything you were talking about, this may help us with regard to the coal mines and power plants and that. I received an email this week from governor's office. It was Samantha Beck and they requested that I, as chairman of the board, be, be a contact person to represent Sweetwater County and help the governor to respond to executive order 14008, which is tackling the climate issue crisis at home and abroad. And that much I can tell you that I emailed back and said more than willing to do it. And it's in reference to that executive order. And that executive order basically references a report to the president on empowering workers through revitalizing energy communities. And just a little bit behind that report, what the governor has been asked to do and reached out to the counties in Wyoming that have the high number of coal, coworkers plus have power plants, coal power, power plants that might be shutting down and that type of thing. So it referenced that. But anyhow, this, this executive order tackling the climate crisis at home and abroad is establishing an interagency working group on coal and power plant communities and economic revitalization. The first step is the, is to prepare initial report describing mechanisms consistent with applicable law to prioritize grant making, federal loan programs, technical assistance, financing procurement and other existing programs to support and revitalize the economies of the coal and power plant communities. That's the charge given to the governor. The governor has reached out for contact, for me to be the contact person for Sweetwater County. And I'm sure they'll involve Campbell County. I'm sure it'll involve any of the counties that have coal powered plants as well as coal mining and that type of thing. So it's obvious that there's appears the administration in Washington wants to be part of the solution, not just the problem, part of the problem, but time will tell. But our governor has reached out and expected to be a part of seeking that. What they're doing also is seeking guidance from representatives of energy communities, which is of course, those stakeholders in the mines as well as governments, tribal unions, labor unions and that type of thing. Specifically, the, this is important. This report identifies, one, a set of communities across the country hard hit by coal mine and coal, coal power plant closures, which should be prioritized for focused federal investment. I think that statement alone fits Sweetwater County as well as other places in Wyoming. It fits Lincoln County as well. This interagency working group will promote job creating investments in communities already impacted by coal mine and power plant closures and will also be proactive, investing now in communities likely to be impacted by additional near-term declines in coal production and generation from coal power, coal fire power plants. It's labeled Rock, Sweetwater County all over it. Secondly, existing federal programs with potentially available funding totaling nearly $38 billion, which could be used to provide immediate investments in energy communities. For what? Grant funding for infrastructure projects, including roads, broadband, water, sewer system improvements, local transportation, creating immediate, good paying union jobs and laying the foundation for economic development. Does that remind you of anything? Presently, what the state wants to do with their $1 billion as well as now the federal government's jumping in for an additional 38 billion. Now that's across the United States, but that's still a good chunk, chunk of change that can help us. Also, resources to deploy innovative low carbon technologies on power plants and industrial facilities. Commissioner Toman, if I remember reading an email, talking about carbon capture and the interest, we have our opportunity. We, we now have that communique that you were talking about right through this group, directly to the government through us. And we need to use it. Financing and grant funding programs to remediate abandoned mine lands, orphaned oil and gas wells and mine impacted water and brownfields. And then grant funding for regional economic development, aligned workforce development, enabling energy communities for air workers for new markets and industries. And that focus would probably bring into mind of, of the training that the Western Wyoming Community College not only is doing, but is planning to doing as they work with our coworkers who may want to retool themselves, whether it's going into another profession or whether it is to transition as many of those new jobs are opening up due to the Trona Mine expansions. Right now, with the plan for the Trona Mine expansions and the number of full-time, high-paid jobs that are going to be offered, there aren't enough coworkers in Jim Bridger to fill all those jobs. But again, we got to keep in mind, we don't want them to because Jim Bridger will still be around for a while and still be a necessary source for energy as we found out this last year with the number of brownouts throughout California and the Southwest, which with this major heat issue going on right now, we're going to find out just how reliable green energy is going to be. So I, I, I see some opportunities in what's going on, not just gloom, lots of opportunities. And I think it's time that we begin to really, rather than we got to protect ourselves, but I'm not quite sure we want to go on a full fight because there are going to be opportunities ahead that will help our workers in the long run as well as keep what we have going to a point that it'll still be needed. So anyhow, that's just pieces of it. I will, here's the rest of the report that I'll pass down. I've highlighted the things that I've reported on, but if there's no I've highlighted the things that I've reported on, but if there's no consternation from the commission, I will continue to work with the governor's office and keep everyone appraised. And if there's times that we happen to have a, which we will have, I'm sure, I'm not sure if it's going to be in face, I'm not sure if it's going to be Zoom, but if somebody would like to sit in and listen, you're sure welcome and that type of thing. But if it's okay with the commission, I'll continue to move forward, working with the governor's office unless you feel differently.
Commissioner Wendling, I definitely like to be kept involved in 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 the office that I'm in, we have a stack of papers, you know, about a foot thick regarding coal fired power plants, our our coal economy and all the information that was used for the Public Service Commission hearings. I might add, some of this movement by the governor may have be be coming from the coalition because instead of the five letters he'd received since he's been elected, three were from our coalition of local governments talking about coal and that some of the proposals that went to the legislature through the coalition, that Terrence Manning Group did a presentation, that presentation to the governor, and I think that helped to educate him. But it is still our job to let him know what we're doing and what we want in this county. And I think we need to step up, like document with letters requesting meetings and maybe through this group is one way to do it, but we you will be in with many in that group. And I think we have a sole responsibility to represent Sweetwater County on these natural resource issues. So that'd be my only comment.
Thank you. And one last thing for my report, as we close out this year, June 30th of 2021, I am going to specifically request that we follow up on what we and Commissioner Toman, you weren't here at the time when we were into the emergency response for COVID and that type of thing. But at that time, as that emergency response team was put together, we had exempt as well as non exempt employees, putting in a lot of extra time during the pandemic, working on the response team, taking on roles, being on call, being work, doing work and that type of thing over the weekends. And our non exempt employees were paid overtime throughout that whole process. Our exempt employees were not, oh, what should I say, paid? I can't think of another word, compensated, thank you, for their time. And and I believe we as a board, and this is when you weren't aboard, Mrs. Commissioner Toman, had commented, hey, when this thing starts settling down and gets near finished, then we need to address compensating those exempt employees that put in their time and that type of thing and be fair with it. So I would like the board's support in requesting that our HR director, working with whomever we feel necessary, come forth and present what would be fair for those exempt employees. They don't have to be by name, just by number, letter, so we can get them compensated. I do know that through the reimbursement, through whether it was emergency management or whether it was through COVID related and that type of thing, we have been almost compensated 100% for any of that that was been turned in. And I think it's time for us to step up and I know it's tough, timing always never seems right, but we owe it to our employees. They stepped up when we asked them to, nobody, I can't tell you, nobody refused to do anything. Everybody just did it and did a great job getting this county through that emergency time. So I would like the board's support to direct the HR person and whoever else you think to present to us a fair compensation for those exempt employees. And of course, I think it it's very appropriate. That's my feeling. So commissioners, your thoughts? Okay, I see head shaking up and down. Okay, very good. Is there anybody else besides our HR person that you'd like to see? I know Christina has all the, our grants manager has all the forms, I believe. I believe the budget people may as well, which is Rob and that, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I know that the sheriff's department had some dedicated resources and, you know, maybe the department heads, but I'm not exactly sure who had the dedicated resources and who didn't. So any any of those department heads or elected officials would probably be good to involve.
Okay, we'll just I'll have, if you don't mind, I'll have talk with our HR director and and have him get on it and try and get this closed out within the next month or so, okay? And have him present that, okay? Other than that, that concludes my report. I'll stand for any questions. Okay, thank you. With that, Commissioner Smith, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's on assignments, had the hospital board meeting day after our last Board of County Commissioners meeting. Great thanks to Richard Mathie as he exits and departs on to his new ventures. He's been a wonderful part of the board and served as chair for when I was first liaison, did an excellent job and just just the quality of person he is and and the board as a whole is so happy to be able to work with them, the work that they are doing. It's it's truly amazing, the time and the effort they put in in an unpaid position and of nothing but the best interest of the hospital and the community. And so thanks to him and also welcome to Candy Pendleton, who takes over in his stead, and she's off and running already. So excited to have her on board as well. And we'll be hearing from CEO Irene Richardson later today as they do their hospital report annually. Also got to attend the Castle Rock, the grand opening of their new clinic and building up there. Congratulations to Bailey Doctor and her whole crew and the work and the effort that it took to get such an excellent building and operation going up there. And also thanks to Senator Brasso, who came by and shared a few words and shook a few hands as well. Did take time, Doc and I to meet with the group that's interested in ambulance service here in the county and look forward to continuing those discussions as looked like a a another possible option for us in the future. So we'll continue on that work and excited about the the nuclear option and learning more. I I did do a little bit of look into it year and a half ago before I knew it was any kind of possibility here in our county. And just wanted to remind Gary Hogavine of Rocky Mountain Power, and I'm sure there are many, many other requirements and things that go into deciding where to put something like a nuclear power plant. But I want to continue to remind him that as they they talk about the $5 billion of investment they're bringing to the state of Wyoming in green energy and new developments and things. And every time I see him, I ask how much of that is coming to Sweetwater County? And so far, it's been a big fat zero, nothing. And so just a reminder that, hey, you're you're taking quite a bit of our economy with you when you close Jim Bridger Power Plant, and we'd love, we'd love to have something back. And so this this may be that opportunity for us. Also got to hang out with Doc and Mary and do the Flaming Gorge All American Road ribbon cutting. Great, a great day and excited about the opportunities that that affords to us to the improvements that can come along with that and just a beautiful part of the world for people to see and the attention that it brings to that. So congratulations to all those, and there were many who were involved in making that happen over many, many years. And finally, Board of Health and Southwest Counseling, their meetings are at the end of the month, so those will be upcoming here next week. And we'll be discussing some board assignments with them as well. So with that, that is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Any questions for Commissioner Smith? Thank you. Up next, Commissioner Shanefield.
Thank you. I'd also like to say congratulations to Janessa in the chamber, and they also have that Flaming Gorge tour that's going on, and it's been pretty busy. My mom and her good friend are pretty excited. They're going to be going the day after tomorrow. So they said that it's been been quite the success for our community, and I think it's a great way to showcase one of the awesome things that we have here in Sweetwater County. SEDC, not a lot from our last meeting. We do have a strategic planning workshop and meeting coming up on Thursday. The museum, I would like to say thank you so much to Bonnie Baker. She has spent so many years, lots of time and energy supporting the museum, and she is about to come off of their board. So we will be appointing a new board member for them today. But thank you so much for her time and energy and echo kind of what Commissioner Smith said. These volunteers spend a lot of time and energy and and effort for something they're not getting paid for, and they're just very passionate about. So we appreciate that. The museum says that the summer vacation season is upon us, and the museum has seen increased visitation from tourists and weekend travelers. The bookstore and the gift shop sales are also up, which makes it difficult to keep fossils and some of the more popular items in stock, and that's a good thing. Now that school is out, the educator, Aiden, is holding summer classes and some other educational events on site. He and volunteer Emilio Sanchez kicked off the Explore History series last Wednesday with loading a musket and a hands on activity that was attended by 16 people. He plans on offering more events throughout the summer, including some Family Fun Fridays and some Super Saturday activities. This Saturday, the museum curator, Amanda, will be at the Broadway Theater to offer another preserving our precious possessions workshops, this time on popular cultural collectibles. So that event starts at 11:00 AM in the theater lobby, and then they also shared a poster with me that I'll share with all of you. And all, of course, all of the museum events are free and open to all of the public. And then the museum also continues to offer its Historic Firearms Research Service by Dick Blust, as well as receiving other research and photo requests. And I don't know if anyone has seen, they've had a lot of great stories coming out that Dick has shared through our email. I appreciate him doing that, and I also appreciate the time and effort in sharing that information with our community. Had a great meeting with Danny and John at the county attorney's office yesterday. And then I also had the opportunity to meet with Sheriff Grossnickel and check out their abandoned vehicle lot. It is clean, it is organized, it looks great. They only have like six vehicles in there right now, and he has reported to me that as soon as those vehicles are coming in, they obviously have to hold them for the period of time that statute requires, but then they're getting them out of there and people are purchasing them and being able to utilize those and get them out of the property. So that's a great thing. Had a state broadband meeting about two weeks ago, and that went really well. We are revising things along with meeting the requirements for the new statute updates. And so we're going to be very busy over the next couple of months. For Sixpenny, I will be setting up a meeting in the next two weeks to discuss with all of the municipalities and any other entities that would like to give us a list of their priorities, and then we will be bringing that back to the commission. I would love any recommendations or requests from all of you before we set that meeting up, so I make sure if there's any additional questions that I get those answered or set up. So if you want to think about that and then get back to me. Nothing new from the events complex after their last presentation at the last meeting. They're getting ready to have their rallies and everything, so we're excited to see that economic boost throughout our community. I'm also very excited and like to echo what my fellow commissioners have said about this nuclear option, and I think Sweetwater County would be able to be a great place for that and would be able to fit the needs of that option. And then also, the city of Rock Springs is having their Blues and Brews next weekend, and so this is going to be another one of those opportunities for people to get out and after COVID shut everything down and enjoy the weekend. That is all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions for Commissioner Shanefield? Up next, Commissioner Lloyd, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman. Um, just a couple of quick things that have kind of repeats, but I things that I think that are important is also excited about the Sweetwater Blues and Brews Festival just because I think it shows that things are opening up and we're moving forward and kind of getting a restart. I I predict a lot of these local events are going to be very large this year because there are other areas that still are not open up. And I think that will be great for bringing in people to the community and just to get back to some normal policy. I'm so excited for that. I also attended the Castle Rock Open House and appreciate their board and Bailey for all the work they've done up there and did a great event and have created a really great facility for the people of Green River and even anywhere in Sweetwater County or the area that chooses to use their medical facilities. So want to thank them for that. Also want to make a quick comment on kind of piggybacking something Commissioner Toman talked about by possibly looking at using a Sweetwater Now or as a possibility of putting up other public notices. All my fellow commissioners know that I've been a huge proponent of that and have been a big pusher at the legislative level to actually move from using newspaper for publications to the to the to an electronic format. And I and I firmly believe that as paper subscription numbers go down, the way to reach people is to eventually get to that digital content. And I know it does alienate a small population of very important citizens that only really look at the paper. But when you start to look at total number outreach to reach the people, the community, I think that is the content we eventually have to leave to. And I I hope that eventually the mu, the local, our legislature will see that and actually move through and pass that. It gets closer every year, but as Jeff and Doc and I affectionately call it the Roy Lloyd Bill, because I've always been pushing it since the first day I was on the pole up here at the stadium, I hope we can get that way one sooner or later. Also, just also felt like I needed to comment on the nuclear energy and also say that I'm in support of it, looking at it. I think our community offers some really great facets. So do the other communities, some workforce, closeness to proximity to some uranium mines. But I think one thing our community offers a little more than the other possible communities is our great community college. And our community college has always had a commitment to our local industries to be able to reach out and work with industry to create concepts, to create those workforces. And I think that's actually an advantage for us as we look at any kind of economic development is the partnership we have with our community college. And I think that makes us a viable factor for a lot of possible developments economically and especially in this concept. And I mean, examples would be they have control room operator degrees now. My son is getting an industrial maintenance degree. Those were all designed based upon the industries we have in our community, and I think that's something we should really push and take a look at. On the converse of that, I do want to say I have been following Governor Governor Gordon and their continued push with the lawsuit against the Oregon and and Washington to open up the coal ports. And I think that is of vital importance that we continue to move to those directions because I really think unfortunately for us to really see coal even stay at a low level of importance, and I believe it should be at a higher level of importance in our economic development and in our community, that's a that's a huge factor that has to be open. So I I I thank Governor Gordon for his continued work on that. As far as bar board work goes, I met with STAR last night. I always joke that STAR meetings go about 15 minutes, and typically they do. I texted my wife at 6:30 last night after an hour and a half and said, oh, my word, this is the longest STAR board meeting I'd ever been in. And I will share most of that when we get to the budget hearings this afternoon because that was the majority of our conversation. But there are a couple of board members that are up for term limits, not term limits, but just it looked like at this point they haven't put in for the board again. That was Jim Love and Joe Zanetti, and I wanted to thank them for their time on the board. That's a really great board, and there was a lot of issues. And we actually, probably the biggest thing within STAR is is getting ready to toward to move toward more of a micro transit system than the macro bus system. And I'm excited as we get to move toward that being in existence. I think it will actually help ridership, and I think it's one of the great examples that STAR had to change how they did things during COVID for various reasons, and they actually found some of the changes they made were more effective in the way they were doing it previously and have been able to use that information the more forward. So thanks to STAR. Met with the Conservation District as we had our watershed meeting, and I'm really enjoyed Jeff Lewis coming over and sharing information. Really have enjoyed being on the Conservation District because truly I came into this commission, probably my weak area being public lands, and it's probably still my weakest area, but I do appreciate their help and. public lands and it's probably still my weakest area, but I do appreciate their help and being able to visit. And I, it was really nice to get there a few minutes early just to be able to ask a couple of, you know, especially having conversation with some of the board members about their thoughts on the nuclear power and things like that and from their perspective. So I really appreciate the time they're taking to educate me and have become more, more informed. Couple complaints I've received specific to truck speed traffic and Mary kind of covered this a little bit in Jamestown with some of the truckers that decided to come toward Green River instead of taking the exit. And they're, they're hauling and no pun intended, I guess pun intended, they're really hauling down that road. And then also out by Yellowstone in Rock Springs, as you come down, I think the second hill, there's, I guess a 40 mile an hour speed limit, but it's pretty excessive out there. So with that being said, as far as other liaison assignments, I did meet with Gene. Things seem to be okay and moving forward. I am going to hurry and do his Public Works Department report. Buildings, all the backup generators have received their annual load bank tests. Have been topped off with fuel to the appropriate levels. Fiber was installed from the courthouse to the museum on Monday. We will be having a pre-construction conference on the Detention Center Grinder Pump Project next Monday. The fiscal year 21 overlay project on County Road number 27, Aspen Mountain Road is complete, except for the installation of the delineators and paint striping, road and bridge. Cruiser finishing, working on finishing up our first round of grading this week. We fell behind because of the hot, dry weather the past couple of weeks. We are still working on patching. And the base one rotor mill project went very well on County Road number seven, Old Stoffer Road. We had a couple of setbacks with the train tracks being in the middle of our project and also the very high winds on Thursday. But as far as projects go, it went very well. And parks, we have a leak in the pump vault that feeds the pond at Jamestown. Cruiser will be working on figuring out where the leak is and how to fix it this week. And the leak at Arrowhead Springs has been fixed and we should be able to start refilling the pond. So that was Gene's report. Had a chance to meet with Gary a couple of times. Just talked about some general HR issues, some financial stuff, went over some VSO information. And then I've also had a chance to meet with Christina. We've had conversations about the Recovery Act money and just general grant moving forward. So I think that really is the majority of information from my report. So there's no other for questions. That would be all I have today.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any other questions for Commissioner Lloyd?
Could I add one comment?
Sure.
I neglected to mention it and thought Commissioner Lloyd might, but thanks to him and also to Bonnie Berry for taking the time and the effort after our last budget session to meet and put together a revised budget proposal that we'll discuss later on today. Took some hours and some effort to get to that point. And I'm sure we'll have a lively discussion regarding that today. But thanks to him and to Bonnie Berry as well for their efforts there.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments, commissioners? I did, I also remiss to bring up at our next board meeting in July, we will be ratifying the appointment of Nick Walworth as the at-large nominee and pointed to the collaborative, to the Sweetwater County Water Users Coalition Collaborative. He was nominated and approved for the Richard Matthews position. We did have three names that were submitted. An individual that Fred Von Aaron's recommended who sits on the governor's new water task force, as well as Commissioner Toman's name was submitted, as well as Nick Walworth, who he is the director of Trout Unlimited. And so the membership of the Sweetwater County Water Users Coalition nominated and elected Nick Walworth as an at-large member to the coalition. And now the next steps will be for the city of Green River and the city of Rock Springs and the commission at their future meetings to support that appointment. So I just wanted to bring that up. I just checked my notes and had that there. Any questions? Anything else to add, commissioners? With that, that concludes our commissioners' reports. I do think we want to take a short break before we move into our action items and that. I'd just like to remind everyone that following the commissioners meeting today, that we'll conduct our budget workshop at 3:00 p.m., which will be on YouTube as well as in live. And then also there is a county commissioners will conduct the budget public hearing and adopt the fiscal year 2022 county budget at 5:30 p.m. on Thursday, June 17th. And that also will be on YouTube and be available for Zoom for our participants. So any questions? With that, let's take a break and come back here. We'll call this meeting back to order and we'll get to our action items. First up under tab E is a signature on an MOU with the Department of Revenue. And here to work with us on that is Mr. Dave Devis, the county assessor. Good morning, Mr. Devis.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Dave Devis. I'm the Sweetwater County Assessor. The MOU you have in front of you is very similar to the last one that we had done. This is basically just the agreement that allows the state to replace our servers that we currently use for our assessing software. It's pretty generic, pretty straightforward. The county attorney's office has looked at it all the, the only signature that's missing is the chairman's. And once that's done, then we can get this forwarded to the Department of Revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Devis. Commissioners, any questions regarding this MOU? With that, commissioners, what's your pleasure about the MOU with the Department of Revenue and authorizing the chairman to sign?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Schoenfield.
I will make a motion to approve and allow the chairman to sign.
We have a motion to approve and allow the chairman to sign. The MOU is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Easy peasy.
Yeah, I would just ask that when it is signed, if I could get a copy, I'll forward it directly to the director of the Department of Revenue and we'll get it. I'll take care.
Sally will take care of it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a good day. Be safe. Thanks for being here. Up next is under tab F is Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program, AIP Grant Agreement, AIP 43. And here with us this morning to present that grant and is Mr. Devon Brubaker, the executive director of Southwest Regional Airport. Good morning, Devon.
Good morning.
Please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Devon Brubaker, Airport Director, Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport. Appreciate the time today. I have a presentation, just a brief one. I think it's going up on the screen here. So before you all today is a FA Airport Improvement Program Supplemental Discretionary Grant Agreement. And the reason I call it that is, well, number one, that's what it is. Number two, I want to point out to you all that a couple of years ago, I stood before you all and previous commission and, and, and worked with you all. And with your support, we're able to receive some design funding, some preliminary design funding for our terminal project. And that ability to be able to move forward with that preliminary design, that support from you And that ability to be able to move forward with that preliminary design, that support from you all in the city of Rock Springs is why I'm able to stand here today and be able to present this grant to you without that initial seed money, if you will, to do the design, the FA, the Wyoming Business Council, Department of Transportation would not be awarding grant funds for this project. I want to talk about a few quick things with the airport. I know I only have a few minutes on the agenda and I want to keep you on schedule if I can, at least on my part. A couple of things that have happened at the airport just since the last time I've been able to do a quick update. We had our new fuel farm come online in December. So the top picture is our old fuel farm below ground. Our new fuel farm's the bottom picture, more than doubled our fuel storage capacity, which has been phenomenal to allow us to hedge our purchases on fuel and also take care of our expanded fuel sales that we're seeing on the general aviation side. And we expect to continue to see well into the future. Another item that we're really excited about, as of yesterday, the BLM Air Tanker Base is fully operational and they have retardant mixed and ready to go on aircraft when the need arises. So the the four acre seat base is ready to cover Southwest Wyoming, Northern Utah, Northern Colorado. So we're pretty excited for for that and being able to support that work. This is a quick map just to show you all that with the coverage from the seat base, Southwest Wyoming, including nearly all of Sweetwater County, we'll have aircraft response within seventy nautical miles with us. So we'll be able to respond to wildland fires when I say we, the BLM, and within a quick timeframe instead of having to pull resources out of another part of the state or out of another state. So pretty excited for that. Another project that is under construction right now is our new snow removal equipment building. This project will be wrapped up by the end of October. So we're pretty excited for that. Happy to show you guys around the project. If you want to come up, I'll show you around the work being done on that. We are finishing up or finished up our winter season where we had our busiest winter on record and to the point where winter is now the busiest season for the airport in terms of general aviation, even more than summertime in terms of revenues and aircraft operations. And so we have taken what used to be our slowest time of the year, where it was quite depressing for about five, six months, until we got to our busy season in the summer. And we now have some shoulder seasons, starting to feel a little bit like a resort community where we have shoulder seasons in the spring and the fall, which is a really nice thing to have when it comes to revenue for the airport. This last winter, we did over four hundred and fifty corporate jets in the in the hangar that was built back in twenty eighteen. So pretty exciting for that, pretty excited for that growth. We expect even further growth going into next winter based on our conversations with our customers. We expect to be quite busier. We will be adding eight thousand additional square foot of hangar space in time for next winter. So we'll be able to store a couple of extra aircraft each day. And we're still working on plans to add about thirty-three thousand square foot of hangar space in the future as soon as I can come up with a couple of million dollars to make that happen. So that's next on my list.
I don't doubt you of it.
Yeah. And the reason we're here today is commercial terminal modernization. I'm going to skip a couple of slides because some of these slides you have seen previously. I quite honestly don't have time to create a new PowerPoint for every one of these updates. So I just skipped some slides that you all might have seen before and we'll get to the stuff that has changed since the last time that we spoke. So when we talk about schedule and get to the next page that has the correct information, we are right at the point where we'll be opening bids on Tuesday of next week for the first bid package on the terminal project. We will break ground in July, officially construction break ground in July. We'll have a formal groundbreaking, most likely in August, when our congressional delegation is on recess because we'd like to have them here for that, working with governor's office and trying to coordinate schedules and have as many people there as possible for that groundbreaking. But we will start construction in July. We're expecting completion to last about eighteen months at this point. We initially were around fifteen months, but with supply chain issues on construction materials, it's been expanded by about three months and we hope we'll get it done sooner, but we don't want to set unreasonable expectations and say we're going to be done in October and and then get done in December. So about eighteen months of construction. Since the last time we spoke about the project, the project cost has increased by a million dollars to nineteen point five one million dollars. And this is single-handedly due to the cost of construction materials that we've seen. You guys have seen it in your projects. Everybody's seen it in their projects, everything from PVC to steel to wood. It's all gotten more and more expensive. We've kept our scope in check. It's really hard to do, trust me, on a project like this to not have scope creep. But because of what we were seeing in the market, we forced ourselves to keep the scope in check and make sure that we didn't increase costs based on a bunch of wants and really focused on our needs. So the total project cost nineteen point five one million, just over thirteen point eight will be coming from the FA, three million from the Wyoming Business Council, just under one point four from Y dot Aeronautics, and then one point three from local, the one point two five that was contributed by the city and the county, or hopefully the rest by the county, depending how today's budget hearing and and this week's budget, public hearing for approving the budget goes. We've kept the local portion of this project at the amount we told you a year ago. We haven't had to increase it. If you remember back when we were doing the initial six penny discussions, we thought we were going to be around three point three million dollars of local and we're going to end up being right at that one point three million of local on a nineteen and a half million dollar project. So even with that million dollar cost increase, we did not increase the local share. We were able to secure additional grant funds from the FA. One thing I want to point out is that one of these silver linings of COVID, I know you all spoke about that with the Star Transit a little bit ago. One of the silver linings is the twelve point eight million of the federal money will be coming in at one hundred percent federal, meaning there is no state or local match on that money. Congress plus up all of the federal aviation grant, Aviation Administration grants for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one to a hundred percent federal. So twelve point eight of the thirteen point eight will be one hundred percent, which has allowed us to get that down to that one point three million. So that's a really nice thing. And show you a couple of quick pictures here. This is our existing terminal. As many of you have seen it, the picture on the left is our hold room when we have a full flight leaving. Picture on the top right is just our current ticketing area and then just a quick aerial shot of the terminal building itself as it exists today. There will be a reconfiguration of the parking lot and rental car lots as part of this project. We won't have any parking lot expansion. We will actually lose a few spots, but that's, it's not necessary to have those spots based on what our forecasts show. So we're doing a reconfiguration. We're also spacing out the parking spots to meet city code where there's enough room to plow between vehicles because right now there's not. So it'll help us maintain the parking lot a little bit better. Here's a floor plan. I know you up on the screen. You're not going to be able to see it. I can share this with you all after the meeting. But here's the floor plan. There's two additions, one on the east side, one on the west side. It'll include a new hold room baggage claim, a new outbound baggage screening areas, new checkpoint, new screening equipment. And then the real big exciting news that I think a lot of people are going to be happy about is the passenger boarding bridge. You see that on the bottom of the picture, a passenger boarding bridge. So once you get into the terminal from your vehicle, you will not need to go back outside to get onto the airplane. So much like you experienced when you go to Denver or other airports, you'll be able to stay out of the elements when you board the aircraft. Some quick renderings of the design. I will have ninety percent drawings tomorrow. Ninety percent construction documents tomorrow from the design team. And we will be going to permit on July sixth on the entire project with the city. So it's moving very, very quickly. Some more shots of the terminal. Some expanded shots of three dimensional of the outside. So we have, it's tough to render in this program what some of the materials are going to be, but we're going to have some charcoal gray, some blues, some weathered steel panels, so natural rusted panels on the outside. A lot more glass, a lot more natural daylighting. So we're excited for that. And now this is the fun part, the next few pictures. These are draft renderings from the inside of the terminal. So this is the ticketing area. So this is standing, if you all have, I think all of you have been in my office before. This is basically standing right where my office is today and looking out into the terminal to give you a little bit of perspective of the difference and what it looks like. So the pattern on the flooring and stuff, some of the finishes are still being refined, but this is generally what you'll see when you come into the building. This is the hold room. The vending machines on the right, that'll actually be a micro market inside the hold room. So there'll be fresh food and beverages and everything inside the hold room instead of just a single soda machine like we have today. And as you can see, the big hold room there, it'll support aircraft as large as a hundred and fifty seat, hundred and sixty seat aircraft. The nice thing about that is we'll be able to start taking diversions. So when aircraft are flying into Denver, Salt Lake, or any of the other regional airports around us and there's a weather issue and they're running low on fuel, they have to divert and get fuel. And right now, we we could get them very rarely, but with this, we will be able to see those on a regular basis. The FA requires a contingency plan that if you have to deplane an aircraft, what do you do with all those passengers? And we can't, we can't meet that demand with a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty seat aircraft today. That diversion results in landing fee revenue, fuel sales revenue. So good opportunities for us to have that. And you also introduced a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty people to Sweetwater County that may never have stopped here. Even if all they do is see our terminal, that's their only impression of our community and maybe they come back in the future.
Mr. Brubaker, question?
Yes.
With this improvement and being able to take those diversions, how many diversions are you thinking you could anticipate coming to our airport with this new terminal?
So our our belief is that we could see anywhere from five to fifteen a month. And that would result in anywhere from fifteen thousand to forty-five thousand gallons of fuel a month. Once we get there, I've been working with a certain airline that really likes to love things, if you can figure out who that airline is. And they are working on setting us up as a primary diversion airport for the Rocky Mountain region. They actually reached out to us and started engaging us. And so we're, we've been sharing emails and phone calls over the last three weeks on that. And they know this is coming and they want to have us set up ready to go, including making sure we have all the ground support equipment to take care of the aircraft. So phenomenal revenue opportunities. Obviously, we can't control weather and other here nor other communities or other airports. But by having a ten thousand foot runway in our location, it gives us a phenomenal opportunity to have this diversion traffic. I can tell you that Cheyenne gets a lot of diversion traffic from Denver and it results in a couple hundred thousand gallons a year of fuel sales. I've spoken with United, Delta, American, and now Southwest. And they're all very interested in when this project is done, being able to set us up and utilize us. So. So hopefully that answered your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. Exciting.
Hotel, the future hotel, huh?
Well, yeah, so I catch a lot of, a lot of trouble for that. But in our terminal area plan, we do have a hypothetical and proposed hotel attached to the terminal. But there is a demand and there is an existing precedent at airports our size in the Midwest and in the Rocky Mountain region where smaller scale, say forty, fifty, sixty room hotels are going up at small airports like ours. So nothing is imminent, nothing is, it's just we have to allocate space on a twenty year plan with the FA. So we needed to allocate the space. If it's ever a possibility, we needed to hold a, hold a spot for it on our long, long term plan. So that's why it's there is because there's opportunities that maybe one day it's a reality for us.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So this is the baggage claim area. We will have a normal baggage belt. So your bags will come out on a conveyor instead of sliding down a relic of a stainless steel slide. It will help with our airline staff, our airline staff, Sky West Airlines staff. It is a true on the job injury risk in how they handle baggage today in our current facility. So we'll have a regular baggage belt and it's interesting when you go through these designs, how detailed you have to be. The length of that belt is based on a calculation of the number of passengers that are forecasted over the next twenty years and how many bags per passenger are checked. And so that you can figure out the peak hour demand for baggage, the peak hour demand for passengers and that. It's crazy, the detail that goes into planning a terminal. It's not just putting up four walls and and painting it. You have to go through a lot of great detail about peak hour demands and and all those kinds of things. So once again, the baggage claim area, you see a lot of natural daylighting, a lot of glass. So you can see through. The hold room area is going to overlook Aspen Mountain. So when you go through the checkpoint, you'll be overlooking Aspen Mountain, which is pretty nice. So we'll have more renderings and some videos in the future, but these are some drafts that I wanted to show you as you make your decision on whether to accept a hundred percent federal funding from the FA. I know it'll be a difficult decision, but that's all I have for you. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you, Devin. Commissioners, any questions for Devin?
Mr. Chairman? Where's the that overage coming from? Where it's not coming from us, apparently, the 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 million dollar overage, who's paying for that?
I got very, very lucky and somehow convinced the FA to give us an extra million on top of what they were already giving us. So.
Good job.
I've really, quite honestly, I really, quite honestly, have no clue how it happened. Outside of I called and said, hey, I really need an extra million dollars. And I said, no. And then about two weeks later, they called back and said, yes.
Wow.
So.
Good job.
Yeah, so, you know, but that's, that's how we got there.
If you don't, if you don't ask, you won't get it.
Yeah.
Other questions, Commissioners?
This is awesome.
All right. If there's no questions, Commissioners, what's your pleasure with regard to the improvement grant agreement and authorizing chairman to sign?
Mr. Chairman, I would so move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Toman to move to approve the Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program Grant Agreement and authorize chairman to sign. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll sign it by Doc. I sent it in my email. I'll sign it first chance I get and it'll move on.
Okay, it'll go to John for his signature after you sign and then it'll automatically go to the city for their approval tonight. So. And I'll probably be back in two to four weeks with another seven point nine million dollar grant for the same project. So bring it on.
One last, one last question.
Yes, sir.
Who does your marketing?
So we use Narrator Group out of Laramie and Fort Collins and they do all of our marketing for us.
Well, they do a good job because I love the billboards and I love the movie theater with if you don't fly Wyoming.
Yeah, yeah, they're very creative. They're one liners. I've had to draw them back on a few of them because I was worried about what some people might think about them.
Agreed.
And even though they were really, really funny and would have been great, I just didn't want to get all of the phone calls.
Exactly, but I, you know what? Good marketing because it just takes it to that edge and it's nice.
Awesome.
I appreciate it.
The video commercial. There's a really good actress in there.
Oh, I haven't seen that one.
There's a really good actress and you should see it. She she has a future if this political thing doesn't work out.
Oh, okay. Very good. I'm getting it now. All right. Thank you, Devin, and stay safe and good luck. Keep up the good work. All right, let's move on. Next up under tab G is a premier on the red desert to hold back migration corridor. And I believe there's a Ms. Ortega that's going to present. I see her on the Zoom screen. So I would welcome Ms. Ortega. And I believe we have another guest with Wyoming Wilderness with us that might be part of that. Just to listen. All right, welcome. Glad to have you here. So with that, Ms. Ortega, are you out there?
I am. I'm here.
Well, welcome. Good morning.
Thank you.
And we're glad to see you today. And I believe you have a presentation for us. Is that correct?
I do. So I'm hoping to share my screen if you guys are okay with that.
So.
Let's see, can you, okay, is it, seems to be showing up. And then if I do this, is it, you guys have full screen, right?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
All right, the floor is yours.
Okay, awesome. Let me just hide myself. You, okay, there you go. All right, um, so my name is Anna Ortega and I am a PhD candidate at the Wyoming Cooperative Fish and Wildlife Research Unit at the University of Wyoming. And I know that the red desert is right in your guys' backyard and that some of you may know. may know of the research going on in the red desert. So I just want to thank you for taking the time to listen to this update on the red desert to Hoback meal deer research project. And before I begin, I just want to recognize that this research is a very large collaborative effort and really would not be possible without numerous funders and partners. So specifically, I would like to acknowledge and thank folks at the Wyoming Game and Fish Department, the Bureau of Land Management, the Muley Fanatic Foundation, including the Southwest Wyoming Chapter in Rock Spring, or I guess Rock Springs and Green River. And then the Upper Green Chapter and then the 10 Country Chapter out of Lander. And they are just, they've been amazing. They have helped so much monetarily or on the ground with field work and captures. So again, this project would not be possible without those folks. And I would also like to thank additional funders, including the Wyoming Landscape Conservation Initiative, the Wyoming Governor's Big Game License Coalition, the National Science Foundation, NOBAC Family Foundation, the SICA Ecosystem Grant, Hugh Charitable Trust, Safari Club International and the Teton Conservation District. And then finally, I'd just like to thank the Rock Springs Grazing Association and Sweetwater Royalties for providing us access to their land during captures and field work. So in 2011, Hall Sawyer, in collaboration with the BLM, deployed GPS collars on deer in the red desert just outside of Rock Springs and Superior, Wyoming. And at the time, it was assumed that most of these deer were residents. They didn't move much throughout the year. In fact, it was thought that they just pretty much hung out year round in the red desert. But to the surprise of Hall and the Wyoming Game and Fish Department and BLM and citizens of Rock Springs, Green River and Superior, these deer were making 150 mile migration from the red desert all the way up to Hoback Basin and the Upper Green River Basin. And they did this journey each and every year. In 2016, five years after Hall first deployed those GPS collars, the Wyoming Game and Fish Department officially designated the Red Desert to Hoback Migration Corridor. And on the heels of this discovery, Matthew Kaufman and the Wyoming Migration Initiative, along with BLM and the Wyoming Game and Fish Department, has continued this research into its current phase. And so now we have over eight years of data and the study is really growing into this long-term research project, which is giving us a long-term perspective on how these deer are moving across the landscape and how they perform across multiple years. So there are long-distance migrants that migrate 150 miles from their winter ranges in the red desert, all the way up to their summer ranges in Hoback and Upper Green River. And then there are medium-distance migrants that migrate 70 miles to the Southern Wind River Range for the summer. And short-distance migrants that either migrate less than 30 miles north or just remain year round in the red desert. And so there are actually three different types of migration within this herd. And even though they share very similar winter ranges outside of Rock Springs, they spend the summer in very different habitats. So short-distance migrants, they spend all year in the red desert, which is a high elevation desert dominated by sagebrush and greasewood and antelope bitter brush, which is shown here in this photo. And right now, there are probably some plants flowering, but a month from now, these plants will be few and far between. It's going to get very hot and very dry. It already is. I hear that it's like predicted to be in the hundreds today in some areas. And then medium-distance migrants spend the summer in areas around South Pass. So this includes in the Prospect Mountains and at the base of the Wind River Range. And South Pass is very similar to the red desert in the sense that it's also a sagebrush step, but what sets it apart from the red desert is an increase in rain and snow each year. There are these large mixed dams of aspen and limber pine and an increase in the number of forbs. And then long-distance migrants spend the summer near Hoback Junction and up towards Jackson Hole. And I took this photo near Bonner Out looking towards the Wyoming range. And we can see that there's just a much more diverse flowers happening there. It's a plethora of flowering forbs up there. This area is dominated by aspen and logical pine and subalpine fir. And our research thus far is showing that long-distance migrants experience much more productive summer ranges. So after the females give birth and after all these deer spend the summer feeding on plants that are not available at other times of the year, they make their return trip back to the red desert. And oftentimes, this is coincided with the snow during autumn. And so it's at this time of the year when the deer return to the red desert that we recapture them. And we have recaptured meal deer on their winter ranges in the red desert for each March and December since 2014. As of this morning, there are 100 currently collared adult female meal deer, including 40 long-distance migrants, 31 medium-distance migrants and 29 short-distance migrants. And most of them have actually made it to their summer ranges. There are still some migrating. So we have movement data or capture data since 2014. And then in collaboration with Paul Sawyer, we have movement data since 2011. So definitely turning into a long-term research project. So our first objective is to understand the benefit of migration diversity for the entire herd. Biologists are starting to understand that migration diversity can be beneficial for entire herds. So this is similar to that infamous idiom of not putting all your eggs in one basket. It's also similar to a diversified stock portfolio. So essentially, in some years, under certain weather or certain conditions, one strategy might do well, maybe they have higher survival. But in other years, they might do poorly. And maybe in those years, another strategy does well. And so migration diversity is thought to ensure that the herd can persevere even in lean years. And so we can address this objective by using data that we've collected during captures. So here is Kevin Montieth using ultrasound equipment. And he can use his ultrasound equipment to collect measurements on body fat as well as reproductive status, like how many fawns they may be pregnant with in the spring. And so fat can determine who breeds, who survives the winter, and can even determine the weight and condition of young. And what we have found over the last seven years is that long-distance migrants have higher percent body fat than medium and short-distance migrants, especially after the summer months. So in March, after they spent all winter in the red desert, all strategies have similar fat reserves. But then after spring migration, summer and fall migration, long-distance migrants have much more fat, which is consistent with their more productive summer ranges. And so we're learning that long-distance migrants are doing well because they have higher fat. And some of our findings are also suggesting that they have higher overwinter survival than medium and short-distance migrants. But interestingly, medium and short-distance migrants are benefiting from their strategies in a different way. So over the last four years, medium and short-distance migrants have had higher fawn recruitment than long-distance migrants, even in 2019 and 2020, when there was some variability in fawn recruitment. One of those two strategies still had higher fawn recruitment than long-distance migrants, which is indicated in purple. And so these findings suggest that all of these different types of strategies, they're all performing differently and contributing to the herd in a different but meaningful way. And so not only do these deer vary in where they migrate, but they also vary in how they migrate or when they migrate. So here's a graph showing the timing of migration and the winter and summer ranges. And this was taken from 2020, so last year. And this black bar indicates the harvest season for Hunt Unit 131, which is just outside of Rock Springs in the red desert. And that, and I believe it's still the case this year, the harvest season for the, will be October 1st through October 6th for the general. And so it's only five days. But what we can see is that long-distance migrants, they begin their fall migration after that harvest season has closed. So they're leaving the Hoback Basin after that harvest season is closed, whereas medium and short-distance migrants, even though they're starting their fall migration after that harvest season, they're still occupying that hunt unit when the season is occurring. And another way of looking at this is if we have this map here, and you can see that there's a, this is based on 2018 data, but here's a long-distance migrant indicated in orange that starts her migration on October 23rd. And all of the hunt units intersecting her migration are closed. Whereas medium and short-distance migrants indicated in green and purple, they are occupying the hunt units at the same time as the harvest season, whether they are migrating or still on their summer range. And so migration diversity kind of provides this different perspective of how animals are distributed across the landscape. The herds in Wyoming are managed in a way to provide hunting opportunities for Wyoming residents. And so migration diversity is not only beneficial in ensuring that the herd can persevere, but it also is beneficial in ensuring harvestable surplus for hunting opportunities. Now, when we talk about harvest strategies, we, so the hunt units intersecting that red desert to migration corridor and largely are, have a limited quota of antler and deer only. And so our data includes GPS data from adult female meal deer. And so if we're looking at how the harvest, if we're trying to compare harvest among strategies or how migration interacts with harvest, we need to also understand the timing of migration for bucks. And so our second objective is to compare the timing of migration among males and females. And to do this, we have deployed trail cameras along the migration corridor since 2016. And trail cameras are very effective, in particular for this migration corridor, because the corridor has already been delineated and we can easily identify pinch points where we can fully capture the migration. And so we'll be using footage from the trail cameras to quantify buck migration and see how, how much they're traveling with those does. So our partners, including the Wyoming Game and Fish Department, the BLM, Wyoming Wildlife Federation, Nature Conservancy, and many more, are interested in seeing how deer move through potential barriers. And so our third objective is to understand how meal deer respond to fence barriers during migration. And we will be using the same trail camera footage that we've used for quantifying buck migration. So I'm just going to show a little clip to give you guys an idea of what the footage looks like. So here we have a deer who's approaching a fence. This was taken last, late October last year in a Fremont lake. And this is during migration. So we can see how animals are approaching the fences. Here is a little bit more hesitant. It's a two-minute clip, so I'll only show a brief little bit. So even though this deer saw the other two deer go over, she's going to go under. And so this just gives you an idea of the type of footage we're able to capture. And so we can answer questions like, how long does it take for a deer to cross a fence? How do they cross? Do they jump over it? Do they go underneath it? Do they even try to go through it? And is the response consistent among individuals? Are all deer responding to fence barriers in the same manner? Or is it different like what we just saw? So we've used this movement, these movement data to map migration corridors, which has resulted in on-the-ground conservation efforts. But there's this large assumption that deer are using these migration corridors over the long term. And the designation of migration corridors may be based on data that was collected over two to three years. So it's important to understand if these deer are consistently using those same corridors two years after the designation, three years, five years, 10 years, and so forth. And so our fourth objective is to understand the consistency of movement throughout the migration corridor across time. And so here's a map showing the spring migrations of 2020. And we can see that in large, like large part, most of the deer are traveling along that migration corridor that was designated in 2016. But we will continue to evaluate whether deer do deviate from that original designation. And then finally, our fifth objective is to identify potential obstacles and barriers across the 150 mile migration corridor. So I'll just give you a brief background on a little story with an obstacle that was discovered. So after looking at the movement data closely from 2011 to through 2013, biologists and managers discovered this pinch point near Fremont Lake, right at the outlet of Fremont Lake. And essentially, it was a pinch point created by Fremont Lake on one side and then an eight-foot tall elk fence on the other side. And this pinch point is where an estimated 5,000 deer travel through during migration each year. And so in 2016, after, about a year or so after a conservation partnership purchased a piece of this land, the Wyoming Game and Fish Department volunteers rerouted that elk fence to expand that pinch point. And so this is just an example of how some obstacles have been identified and the conservation efforts that have been taken care of thereafter. And so our goal is to look at the whole migration corridor, because this is just a one-mile segment of 150 mile migration corridor. And so our objective is to see if there are any other potential obstacles that may be affecting the movement of these meal deer. And so since the discovery in 2011, the Red Desert to Hoback Meal Deer Research Project has really been the poster child for the conservation of migration corridors of big game animals across Wyoming and the American West. And we are really starting to understand the benefit of migration diversity, how migration interacts with harvest, what remaining barriers, especially fencing barriers, maybe obstacles for deer, and how deer may be consistently using the same migration corridors across time. And so we also are using, well, this data set is also just in, it's, it's pretty much a, a science, it supports that science-based model of conservation for migration corridors, which begins with the mapping of the migration corridor and then looking at how the animals move across the landscape and identifying those potential threats that could affect their movement and abundance. And so that's just to give you guys an update of the current research, the current objectives we are working on. And yeah, I'd just like to thank you guys again for taking the time to listen to the update. And again, I want to thank everyone who's a part of this project and partners and funders. And I can take any questions. Matt Cusacrio, who's there in person, can also forward me any questions. Or I do have on this PowerPoint some emails too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. At this point, commissioners, any questions or comments?
I would just comment.
Mr. Toman?
I've been watching the Zoom meetings on the migration crossings.
Uh-huh.
And the routes. And it seems like Teton County has gotten the top 10 and the one at Highway 30 out of Kemmer, it got dropped down off the list when I thought it was supposed to be one of the top ones this year. I, I know that might not be in your purview of study, but I just thought it was interesting.
Huh. Yeah, that's actually, that's something that I was not aware of. But that is interesting for sure. Yeah, slightly out of, out of this study area, but huh, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Mr. Taga, this is Chairman Welling. Question for you is, in past reports over the last years since the research has been going on with the study of the corridor, specifically this one, there's a pinch point up there in Sublet County, I believe. Is it around Soda Lake or Fremont Lake? That's concerned researchers as they follow this corridor that's been rather difficult for the migrating herd. Is that still a common concern or has there been movement to fix that? Do you know?
Yeah, so the, I, I believe, and maybe I'm wrong on this, that the pinch point being talked about is that Fremont Lake pinch point that was expanded in 2016. And I didn't really go into it during this, this little presentation, but as of last week, we have actually started a research project looking at that before and after movement relative to that barrier to see how deer have, if they're changing their movement after that, that elk fence was rerouted. And so that's something that hopefully will start to come to light here in the next couple months or year.
Great. Good to, that's great to hear that. Any other questions, commissioners? At this time, I believe Matt's in the audience. I'll look out to Matt. And do you have anything you wish to add? If you do, would you come up? You can come up to the podium and introduce yourself and who you're with. Thank you. Good morning, Matt. Thanks for joining us.
Good morning.
Your name and who you're with, please.
Thanks. My name is Matt Cusacrio. I'm with the Wyoming Wilderness Association. And we're currently working with a group called the Citizens for the Red Desert, which is a citizens group that's sort of advocating for conservation and protections for areas within the Northern Red Desert. I don't have anything specifically to add on this presentation at all. We just sort of thought it would be a great, at least a reintroduction for folks that maybe hadn't seen research that's, that's going on in our state. And obviously, our Wyoming Cooperative Fish and Game Research Unit is one of the best in the country and certainly a national leader in migration science research. And just wanted to point out again that we are lucky enough that we have such sort of spectacular resources and the landscapes able to still support those resources.
Very good.
So thanks so much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here and being available to, for a man. Thanks for being here and being available to, for Amanda to, or Ms. Taga to answer any questions. Appreciate that. Anything else, Ms. Taga?
Uh, hold on, let me stop my chair. Nope, that is it.
Well, we certainly appreciate the update. It's definitely, the corridors are huge for Sweetwater County as we try to remain as a multiple-use county throughout, within the state of Wyoming, and also try to find that balance, working with conservation, working with wildlife, and, and also working with industry that we have in the county to keep economics going. So we appreciate you joining us today. It was a great report. Before we say goodbye, commissioners, anything else? Or Ms. Taga? Yes, Commissioner Toman.
I would just have one more comment. The private landowners are the key to the success of these animals. And so I, I just want to make that point, that that's very important, that that connection and partnership be maintained or enhanced.
Totally, yep.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Toman, because you're exactly right. We cannot leave or not recognize the importance of our landowners. Thank you for that. All right, Ms. Taga, well, thank you for the presentation, and you have enjoyed the day, and please stay safe.
Okay, thank you, guys. Stay nice and cool. Hopefully it doesn't get too hot.
Thank you. You have a great day now.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you. With that, as we move forward, our next agenda item is Memorial Hospital of Sweetwater County Annual Update. And I believe here to present that is Ms. Irene Richardson, the CEO from Memorial Hospital. And Ms. Richardson, if you'd like to come forward and present, I know you have some guests with you. If you introduce yourself, as well as your guests, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Welling. I'm Irene Richardson. I'm the CEO at Memorial Hospital of Sweetwater County, and I have with me our Board President, Taylor Jones, and Ed Tardoni is also joining us from our board. So I'm really happy to be here and speak to you about the hospital on their behalf. I have my PowerPoint. Okay. Gosh, tough act to follow with the new airport and those adorable deer. Okay, let's see, how does it look up there?
We do, we do have some gems in Sweetwater County, and, and Memorial Hospital is one of them as well, along with the airport and our public lands and our wildlife. So it's a good morning for Sweetwater County to, and us as commissioners, Ms. Richardson.
I guess, I guess we'll do it like that. So I hope Taylor handed out some, some goodie bags for you guys. We really appreciate everything that the county does for us. I'm going to start out with our agenda, and then is it just the space board? Okay. So just a quick introduction, talk about our board, our executive leadership team, our employed physician and provider team, the services we provide, and then our departmental accomplishments. I asked all of our department leaders to send me everything they've done over the year in addition to, to what our challenge that we met with COVID, some community, community events that we held over the past year, some annual statistics for you to see, and then talking about our county maintenance fund and any, any questions you may have. So statutorily, we want to make sure that we, we comply with the statute 18-8-107, but we're also very pleased to be able to present some information to you about the hospital. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we're, I'm presenting the annual report at the June meeting. And then just talking about our hospital, we're a joint-commission accredited 99-bed rural acute care facility located in southwest Wyoming, and we service a region exceeding 10,000 square miles. We have 550 employees serving our primary service area, Sweetwater County and surrounding areas. We provide a vast array of services, including in and outpatient services, emergency care, dialysis, occupational medicine, radiation and hematology oncology services, and we continue to maintain a strong and viable presence in our community. So again, our Board of Trustees, Taylor Jones, Richard Mathie, Barbara Sawada, Marty Kelsey, and Ed Tardoni, and then our County Commissioner liaison, Commissioner Jeff Smith, just a really great group, very supportive, very active, and very helpful. And we're, we're pleased to be able to, to speak on the behalf of the Board of Trustees today. Again, the executive leadership team, myself, our Chief Clinical Officer, Carrie Quickenden, Chief Financial Officer, Tammy Love, Chief Nursing Officer, Anne Clevenger, and Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Melinda Poyer. And then new leaders that we've added to our leadership team, Kim White, the Director of the Emergency Department, Jonathan Beatty, our Director of Pharmacy, Carrie Canister, Director of Health Information Management, Lena Warren, Director of Community Outreach, Patty Alexi, Director of Education, Mary Ann Sanders, our Director of Physician, Physician Recruitment and Physician Relations, and Jeanne West, our Director of Case Management. So my next slide is a slide of all of our employed providers. We have 41 employed providers. These providers offer services at the medical office building, which is adjacent, adjacent to the hospital, and also at the 3,000 College Hill location where we have our family medicine and our occupation medicine clinic, and then also our hospital-based physicians, our anesthesiologists, pathologists, and, and those are all of our employed physicians. So we're really proud of that group, and it continues to grow. The services we provide, we have a full list of services that, at the hospital. We have a full clinical laboratory, full medical imaging services, surgery, OB-GYN, the emergency department, we have an ICU med surgeon. You'll see accomplishments from all of these areas. Some of the new services that we offered last year that we introduced was peritoneal dialysis, telehealth, the walk-in clinic, our neurology clinic that we opened in November of 2020, and new services from the University of Utah's Dermatology Clinic. So I'm going to go through and talk about our departmental accomplishments. I asked our whole department leaders to send me all of their accomplishments and everything that they did over the year. And, and Jeff told me that less is more, so you guys are getting the condensed version because they, they have done so much, and I'm so proud of, of our staff for everything that they did. They went above and beyond, and I can't say enough good things about them. So starting off with med surgeon ICU, our staff worked extremely hard to take care of our patients during COVID-19. During our COVID peak, we had up to nine patients in our ICU COVID unit, and we averaged about four to five COVID patients per day during the months of November and December, and that was our peak time. In OB-GYN, labor and, labor and delivery and nursery, we have some new services that we implemented there. We created and implemented a severe hypertension, pre-eclampsia policy, and postpartum hemorrhage policy. They're evidence-based and up-to-date with the most recent research. We worked with the University of Utah California Maternal Collaborative to accomplish this. All staff will have yearly education on this to ensure competency, and we have a hemorrhage cart stocked and ready to go at all times on the unit to ensure patient safety. Another thing that the OB unit started was nitrous oxide for pain relief. This has been a great addition for moms who want to labor without medications or epidurals. It is self-administered, so it helps the moms to be in charge of their body and their delivery. We also started using the Novi. It's a wireless electronic fetal monitor, so it allows for the staff to safely monitor the baby, but still provides mom with mobility. And this was purchased from a grant from Genesis Alkali. In our surgical services department, the surgical services department won the Southwest Wyoming Nurses Association Nursing Collaborative Practice Award. Sorry. Okay, I'm getting behind. I need Taylor. See, I need. Okay, I'll just keep my finger on it. We're awarded the Southwest Wyoming Nurses Association Nursing Collaborative Practice Award for our teamwork during the COVID-19 pandemic. The surgical services department maintained a score at or above the 80th percentile for patient satisfaction through press gainy. And then we created and improved upon a pandemic plan specific to surgical services. In dialysis, we currently have 42 hemodialysis patients and five peritoneal dialysis patients, that's in-home dialysis. We have extended our hours on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday to help with some of the load. And then we're focusing on the ETC, which is the end-stage renal disease treatment choice model, per CMS's goal to have 80% of all end-stage renal disease patients performing a home modality treatment or receiving a transplant by 2027. So we're, we're working on that initiative. In the emergency department, and in your bags, you're going to find a little bit more detail about the University of Utah physicians, and talks about times when you, you would visit the emergency room, times when you would visit the walk-in clinic and a telehealth visit, so kind of some good information there. Our ED has been working diligently, whoops, I got to go back one. ED has been working diligently to improve the patient satisfaction scores with great success and is something that we're continuously working on. And our ED has been successful in changing processes during the pandemic to ensure the safety of patients and staff. Establishing new triage processes and the use of appropriate PPE has allowed the ED staff to take care of numerous COVID-19 patients without transmission of the virus to staff or other patients. We're very, very proud of that. Our cancer center, we reapplied for and were awarded the 2020 to 2022 Wyoming Cancer Resources Program Grant for $176,800, which enables us to employ the Region 5 Wyoming Cancer Resource Coordinator and promote and participate in various cancer prevention and screening initiatives. We applied for and were awarded a grant through the Wyoming Cancer Program for $8,333 to enable us to implement a wellness survivorship program and offer a variety of health and wellness opportunities to our patients. And we reapplied for and were awarded a grant through the Wyoming Breast Cancer Initiative for $5,950 to host a fun and educational 2021 breast cancer awareness event, and to continue with the Paint the Town Pink Initiative in the month of October. And this is a fourth year in the row, in a row that we've been awarded this grant. Some continued accomplishments, our American Society of Clinical Oncology, the ASCO Quality Oncology Practice Initiative Grant Team gave a presentation to teams from hospitals across the nation on our Advanced Directive Quality Improvement Project. We received a lot of positive feedback, and we'll be starting our project in a couple of months. We received Central Institutional Review Board approval to open our first clinical trial here. We plan to open our first trial as soon as we have received the training. We started a new patient orientation program for all new cancer patients to meet the patient navigation team and connect them with help and resources from the beginning of their treatment. And in radiation oncology, we installed our new stereotactic radiosurgery cone system and completed the training. Once our physician, our physicist is done commissioning the system, we'll be able to offer these services, these highly precise treatments to our patients with small brain lesions. In our lab, we offer multiple outpatient lab locations on and off campus, incorporating admissions and laboratory services, resulting in the enhanced patient, enhanced patient convenience and satisfaction while maintaining socially-distanced environments. We opened the swabbing station with convenient hours for the collection of a variety of specimens. To date, we've performed over 23,000 COVID tests on various platforms. We average about 60 per day. We developed a web-based laboratory directory to assist home health agencies, nursing homes, and other collection sites in the collection of blood and body fluids. Information includes specimen requirements, minimum volumes, collection instructions, and interpretive data such as reference ranges. And then there, there's the website there, and this has been really, really beneficial to the different agencies that we work with, and they're really grateful for that. We participate in numerous health fairs throughout the year while continuing to offer wellness testing to our community every, every Tuesday and Wednesday. And we applied for and received SLIP grants for $1.2 million of laboratory equipment for the management and treatment of COVID-19. Our accomplishments in medical imaging, in medical imaging, we've extended the hours for MRI or medical, not, MRI, to accommodate a busier schedule as we, as well as scheduling MRI on-call for emergency procedures. The Memorial Hospital Foundation generously donated $394,000 to the hospital to purchase our Hollogic 3D CAVI art mammography unit. So we were excited about that as well.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, but is it true that the hospital got a new, received or purchased one of the newest state-of-the-art MRI machines, which is bigger and sized and better accommodate those that may have claustrophobic conditions through that?
Yes, this is true. We, we're actually releasing it. It's a large bore unit, so yes, it does help with.
And is it the only one in southwest Wyoming, or?
I, I think it might be. I don't want to sneak out a turn, but yeah, I think it might be. And it's, it's really, for anyone who's, who's a little bit claustrophobic, it's, it's really a lot wider and a lot, lot bigger.
A little friendlier.
Yes.
That's what I'd heard, and I just, when you got to this slide, I just, you know, a little, people need to know that it's the, probably the only one in southwest Wyoming. So if you've got a little claustrophobic fear, welcome you to Memorial Hospital, Sweetwater County. We can take care of you.
That's right, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our cardio-pulmonary department, with the addition of Dr. Prachi Puar, our neurologist, we started performing electroencephalogram, EEGs as a new service to our patients. Dr. Puar and the team are excited to see this new service grow. And then during the COVID surge, we instituted double coverage for respiratory therapy services for weekends and nights. We were proactive in training our nurses to help breathing, with breathing treatments for any future surges. Our rehab services, Dr. Jacques Denker is the new medical directory for our rehab services. On May 22nd, we held our first annual PT Power Trip 5K run to promote and support the physical therapy department. We had 60 participants and hope to make this an annual event. In the pharmacy, we're doing IV room reconstruction to meet certification and 797 requirements. Our pharmacy is now running the Pain Stewardship Task Force and the Antimicrobial Stewardship Program, hospital-wide assessment of safe medication practices for IV medications, and we're implementing biosimilar agents for cost savings in dialysis, outpatient infusion, and oncology. In education, we perform annual education on our entire staff during the months of January and February. So we train, we re, did our education for 550 staff members, and then all of the, the new hire registered nurses and the clinical travelers. We continue with our cross-training orientation plans for covering the COVID-19 patients. We've done education and competency on the ultraviolet light disinfection robot, and that was something that we also purchased through SLIP money. And then also training and the distribution of the Pappers, which is the power air purifying respirators, which was also with SLIP money. And then we also, the education department also assists with the vaccine clinics. They train students from the University of Wyoming, Western Wyoming Community College, the University of Wyoming, the University of Wyoming Brand Program, and scrub tech students from Laramie Community College. Our education department also offers American Heart Association courses for the staff and the community. We offer BLS and CPR classes for healthcare providers that last Tuesday of every month. We also introduced the AHA Heart Saber Course to the community. They've, that's designed for anyone with little or no medical training who need a course completion for their job or regulatory or other requirements. We do advanced and pediatric cardiac life support, and those classes are scheduled for the fall of 2021. And then Wyoming Advanced Directive Education Assistance to Patients, Staff, and Community. So they do a lot of education, a lot of, a lot of help throughout the community, and we're really proud of our education department. In quality, we administered the Culture of Safety Survey to all of our staff with a response rate of 58%. We updated the Performance Improvement and Patient Safety Plan. We implemented a new patient experience survey vendor, which is press gainy. So rather than a phone call, you'll be receiving those surveys through the mail. And then we implemented a new continual survey readiness committee comprised of every department within our organization and a strategy for joint commission survey readiness. We created over 120 joint point reminders for our staff to help prepare for the joint commission survey, and we did welcome the joint commission for our triennial accreditation survey in May. They came, they come every three years. There were 11 findings noted, and this was a decrease of 80% than the joint commission survey in 2017. So the hard work is paying off, and we were really thrilled with that survey. So now the window for, for the next time for them to be here will be in May of 2024. Infection prevention, so in October, we were contacted by the Wyoming Department of Health to see if we could be the Vaccine Center for the COVID-19 immunizations. We hosted vaccine clinics in December and January. We hosted vaccine clinics in December and January, and we had a great response for the community. And that allowed public health time to get their mass vaccination clinic up and running at the events complex. We also held second vaccine clinics in January and February. And we also continue to hold drive-through vaccine clinics at the hospital, at our swabbing station in the front of the hospital. Whoops, how can I go back? Can I go back? Okay, so in health information management, informatics, and IT. In November, our board approved for the hospital to purchase Cerner Community Works as our new electronic health record. We're so thrilled about that, and we're really excited to implement that. The teams have been working diligently to implement this fully integrated system, and this will be a great benefit to our patients. The Cerner theme team has weekly activities to promote, to promote the new EHR design and implementation and rounds on staff at each project milestone, and we're scheduled to go live on, in October of two thousand and twenty-one. Case management, you can see our case managers there, Jeannie West, Robin Jenkins, Deb Davis Richardson, Jolynn Porter, Julie Levitt, Afton Smith is our new care transition nurse, and then James Cummings is our only social worker at the hospital. Julie, Jolynn, and Deb conclude, completed the Moderna and Pfizer trainings to help administer vaccines and help with the vaccine clinics. And case manager was, case management was instrumental in helping when our processes changed due to COVID nineteen. Many hours were spent adapting and working through the challenging cases in order to meet the needs of our patients. As our campus was closed to visitors and our families during the pandemic, case management attempted to intervene and provide as much emotional support and assistance to listen, guide, and help with challenges and difficulty our patients experienced to COVID nineteen. And it was just really, we were very fortunate to have that really caring and compassionate team working with our patients and their families. In facilities, our facilities department just did a whole bunch of stuff last year. The central plant major maintenance project upgraded all the chiller components to the most current reliable equipment and systems. This will not only save hundreds of thousands of dollars over their lifespan due to increased efficiencies, but will ensure continued reliable chilled water for cooling spaces and cooling very costly equipment for decades into our future. Our central HVAC project replaces several of our original air handlers that were past their end of life. This renovation provides high-quality filtered, humidified, and temperature-controlled air for many essential services in our facility, including our OR and medical imaging. We installed UVC radiant lighting in most of our air handlers. As an added measure of infection prevention, UVC lights irradiate the bacteria and virus cells. Both the HVAC project and the UVC project were SLIP grants that we received from the state for the prevention and managing COVID. Continuing with facilities, our medical imaging renovation currently in progress will create better imaging spaces to enhance privacy and the patient experience. A new cable fall arrest system was installed on our hospital and medical office building flat roofs to provide safety for our workers and continued replacement of interior lighting with LED lighting. Some of the upcoming renovations and projects that we're doing, renovation of our original OR area, making the OR surgical rooms more user-friendly and adaptable to today's surgical techniques and procedures. This renovation will also include a new decontamination and sterile processing area, joining our OR for ease and efficiency of this file process. Renovation of our foundation and lab draw area, this will make this process even more patient-friendly and efficient. And a new bulk oxygen system to replace the system now and services it nears its end of life as well. Environmental services. Oh, yes, sir.
Going back to your facilities. On those completed projects that, through the air ventilation and everything, how much of that was taken care of by COVID dollars?
So
Projects.
The HVAC project, we were able to secure funding from SLIP with a SLIP grant, and that was two million three hundred and fourteen thousand. And the remaining, because the SLIP money had to be used by December thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, the remaining funds for that project will be, the sources will come from the CARES Act money.
Very good. Thank you.
And then the UVC in the HVAC system was four hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight seventy-five, and that was all covered with the SLIP.
Wonderful. Wonderful. That's great to know and great use of federal dollars. So way to get on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so environmental services. To assist with improving our patient experience, environmental services has been, has been focusing on the cleanliness of the rooms and the environment. They've implemented a new environmental ambassadors team, which involves staff members interviewing patients to see how we're doing. And they've also implemented the regular use of the UVC robots, and that was also paid for through SLIP money. In security, the security department provides a secure and safe environment that allows patients, visitors, personnel, and volunteers to deliver or receive quality services with minimal threats against their personal well-being and property. The security department provided timely services to patients, visitors, and personnel with seven thousand four hundred and eighty-eight assists for the year without any complaints on the service calls. Security rounding has resulted in no personal property or hospital theft loss to the facility or staff for the year. And then we also completed the installation of new state-of-the-art security camera system. In materials management, during the last year, materials management spent the majority of their time trying to procure PPE. And they worked very hard to do this and had great success. Through the efforts of the team, community, networking with other hospitals and other employees throughout the hospital, we were able to pull off what was almost seemed like the impossible. It really showed us that we're one community and that we care about each other and, and also the greater good of the, of the patients of our community. Another exciting endeavor that materials management is working on throughout the hospital is the Cardboard Free Initiative project in order to make sure the hospital is as cardboard-free as much as we can be. When shipments come in through the receiving dock, we ensure that everything is unboxed from the corrugated cardboard before it leaves the dock. This is an infection prevention initiative and allows us to be proactive in improving our quality and safety for the hospital. Outpatient, this is nutrition services and clinical dietitians, our outpatient nutrition services. They're continuing their diabetes education collaboration between the hospital and community nursing services, and that's recognized by the ADA. They were closely with the county to provide medical nutrition therapy outpatient services. An additional weekend and evening services started in March of two thousand and twenty. Providing nutrition care and counseling for cancer center and dialysis patients, worked with Meals on Wheels to update specialty diet orders for Sweetwater residents, and worked closely with oncology patient navigation team to provide individualized patient care. And the community involvement, nutrition presentations at the senior center. They help attend our, our health fairs, review monthly menus for Sweetwater jail and head start programs. And then we participated in the Paint the Town Pink events for the Sweetwater County Cancer Initiative. In administration, we've, we've put out two issues of our Health Matters Community Newsletter. You should be receiving those in the mail quarterly. And then we continue to do our person-centered care workshops. That was part of our two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-one strategic plan. We've conducted seventy sessions since May of two thousand and nineteen. We've trained six hundred, six hundred and twenty-three people have completed the all-day session, staff, physicians, our board, our foundation board, we've, we've given this training to everybody that comes in contact with our patients at the hospital, and we're really excited about it. I continue to do, along with our person-centered care committee, we do rounding on staff. We also have our Communicating with Empathy workshops. We've had sixteen sessions since we started in January of two thousand and twenty-one, and we've trained two hundred and seventy-eight people in that two-hour session. We also do, started our monthly Communicating with Empathy newsletters. That started in February. We added a question to our patient satisfaction surveys, and that question is the degree to which the entire hospital staff showed compassion in providing care and services. We also implemented our Thankful Thursday, which is an email campaign, including thank you notes to our staff as well as patient satisfaction survey comments. Our Patient and Family Advisory Council met nine times this fiscal year. There are currently sixteen community members on this committee, and we're really pleased about that. We've been meeting since May of two thousand and nineteen, and we get a lot of good feedback. And we've implemented a lot of their suggestions at the, at the hospital. We also provide and support one of our staff members, their service on the Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce Board and Annual United Way Campaign. And then we also have our grievance, which is our Complaints Committee process with review and service recovery. We work really hard to make sure that we, we talk with our patients and, and we see what we can do to improve their, their say at the hospital, and if there's anything that we can learn from those in that process. We continue to do quarterly town halls via Zoom, our monthly leader, leadership team meetings via Zoom, and then our monthly regular special workshop board meetings via Zoom have continued. Our board is part of our new educational portal called iProtean. It's a self-taught, self, I guess, class that, that the board key logs into as, as well as senior leadership, and it has really good information for governance and leadership. So we're really excited about that. Our Board of Trustees conducted a self-assessment in May of two thousand and twenty-one. Our Board of Trustees also updated their bylaws, and then work is underway for our two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-four strategic plan. Public relations, Deb puts out tons of public, public relations. We offered scholarships to three Sweetwater County High School graduates. The recipients, Ricky Cozad, Delaney Gardaia, and Abby Hodla all received scholarships. We were really happy that we were able to do that. Again, Paint the Town Pink in October of two thousand and twenty. Byright and Downtown Rock Springs and Golden, our senior center in Green River, were this year's winner of the Paint the Town, Paint the Town Pink contests. The hospital's county, the hospital regional cancer center sponsors the contest annually to encourage businesses in both communities to decorate their storefronts during Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is October. Our COPE program, the providers at the Pediatric Clinic of Sweetwater Memorial, launched the COPE, which is creating opportunities for personal empowerment program in the spring. We, offered by the clinic's pediatric nurse practitioner, Tammy Walker. COPE is a seven-week cognitive behavioral therapy program designed to build resiliency skills in children and teenagers. And we've had a lot of positive feedback on that. Medical staff services, the medical staff service office went live with the new credentialing software in July. Medical staff bylaws committee continues to work on their new bylaws. And we again mentioned the joint commission survey, the medical staff office participated in the survey and passed with zero findings. Some really good information about our own employed providers. Dr. Stewart, internal medicine physician, completed the Leadership in Medicine course in April of two thousand and twenty-one, which was sponsored by the Wyoming Medical Society. Dr. Jacques Denker, an orthopedic surgeon, was selected as a fellow to the American Academy of Orthopedic Surgeons. Dr. Larry Lauritsen, which is family and occupational, a family and occupational physician, was chosen as a Sweetwater County representative to the Wyoming Medical Society. Dr. David Danzy, which is family medicine, was chosen as a trustee for the Wyoming Medical Society. And Dr. David Liu, ear, nose, and throat, joined the American Rheinologic Society and the American Thyroid Association. Dr. Bonu Symington, which is our hematology oncologist, had several articles published in the Journal of Clinical Oncology over the past year. And you can see the articles. She had five different articles that were published. So we're really impressed, really glad that we have her on staff with us. And then Dr. Sigsby Duck, ENT and allergy, just competed, completed his past president years with the Triological Society, which is an academic organization within otolaryngology, head and neck surgery. Dr. Duck recently spoke about rural solo practice in otolaryngology. And Dr. Melinda Poyer, which is a family medicine physician and our hospital chief medical officer, was elected president of the Wyoming Board of Medicine. Dr. Poyer also serves as the secretary for the District Board of Health. The Memorial Hospital of Sweetwater County Family Practice received the following awards from the Wyoming Department of Health Immunization Unit. So we received lots of vaccination awards. You can see them here. We're really proud of the work that they do in the vaccine clinic, just really impressive work that they've done there. Our foundation, so we did a lot of grants, and I'll go into a little bit more detail about the grants that we received. The SLIP grants that we received, a total of five million five hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. So in April, every state was awarded at least one point two five billion dollars. The state of Wyoming was awarded one point two five billion. In August, they allowed entities to apply for SLIP grants. And so we did, and we put together a team that was really effective and really efficient at coming up with projects that were going to be used for the, to prevent, prepare, and, and respond to COVID nineteen. So all of these projects have to do with COVID nineteen. Tiffany and the foundation did an excellent job putting these grants together. And the stipulation was that the funds had to be used by December thirtieth. And so we hurried up and we got these grants together, and we were awarded the summary of that five point five million was a mobile lab unit for two hundred and seventy-eight thousand two fifty, UV robots for two hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-three, payroll reimbursement for six seventy-two, eight ninety-four. Additional lab analyzers for three hundred and sixty-six thousand walk-in lab equipment. Of course, we had to set up the walk-in labs so that we can be able to treat patients in a, at the, at the walk-in clinic, three hundred and eleven thousand three oh four. The HVAC project, the, the one that we spoke about earlier, two million three hundred and fourteen thousand, and the UVC in the HVAC system, which was four hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight seventy-five. We also applied for and received a mobile response unit, the hundred and ninety-seven thousand two fifty, a Cefiad machine, the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars, five hundred and thirty-one dollars, sorry about that. Pappers for seventy-seven thousand one fifty-five, proning beds for thirty-nine thousand five hundred. And also through Sweetwater County, through Christina's help, we also received additional SLIP funding for three hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred dollars for ventilator upgrades and the amount of twenty-one thousand one sixty-four, temperature kiosks, twenty-seven thousand four twenty-two, and medical testing equipment for two hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and one dollars. So we were really happy, and we were able to get those purchased and implemented and everything by December thirtieth, thirtieth, which was the deadline for the use of those funds. So we were really proud of the team for all of that. In addition, our foundation operates our Waldner House. It's extremely busy. Over the past year, we've had at least one guest staying in the house weekly. And then our annual foundation golf tournament will be held on August fourteenth at Rolling Green Country Club. Community outreach, our volunteers came back to work with us and at the hospital in March of two thousand and twenty-one. We were so grateful to have them back. They were so happy to be back. So we were excited about that. And then we had a very successful health and wellness fair. It was called Good to Go, and it was held on March sixth at the Young Heart Community Center, and it was very well attended. Physician recruitment and relations, our new providers over the last year, Dr. Lexa Geist, an OBGYN physician, Dr. Joshua Binks, radiation oncologist, Dr. Prachi Puar, our neurologist, and then also the addition of our new neurology clinic at Sweetwater Memorial, Brian Barton, physician assistant at the Sweetwater Walk-In Clinic, and Katie Machelski, a nurse practitioner, nurse, nurse practitioner at their Sweetwater Walk-In Clinic. Human resources, we worked very hard to recruit and retain excellent skilled employees. Since two thousand and seventeen, we've reduced our turnover rate from twenty-six percent to eighteen percent. That was also one of our goals of our strategic plan, and that's helped us reduce our agency staffing or our contract staffing of staff by millions of dollars. We worked diligently to find agency staffing to supplement our staff during COVID, which we did use CARES Act money for. And then we worked with the Department of Homeland Security, Wyoming Department of Health, and Governor Gordon to bring the National Guard to temporarily assist with contact tracing efforts and other associated administrative tasks related to the management of COVID. And we were grateful to have them here. They, they actually wanted to stay for extra time, and we were able to keep them here for that. So we were excited about that. Our Sweetwater Specialty Clinics, amongst the, the many services they provide, is chronic care management, annual wellness visits, preventive services, including screens for depression, memory issues, and fall risks, remote patient monitoring, behavioral health integration. remote patient monitoring, behavioral health integration. Our community partnerships, Young Heart Senior Center, Rocky Mountain Home Health, Hospice of Sweetwater County, Wyoming Center on Aging, Mountain Pacific Quality Health and Sweetwater Care Coalition. And then emergency management, just talking about the COVID-19 response. As far as patient care, again, our ICU was converted to the COVID-19 unit. We established our drive-through swabbing station to test for COVID-19. We opened our walk-in clinic at 3000 College Drive to treat the non-emergent patients. We relocated our lab services to the foundation area for convenient and safe community access. We cross-trained clinical staff to various areas to meet the needs of our patients. We also implemented and established our telehealth in all of our clinics. Our drive-through swabbing station has been the hub of the COVID testing for our community. Again, it's located at the front of the hospital. It still is there as we speak. It's very easy access for our patients and we've received great community support for it. We're grateful to the Sweetwater County Sheriff for donating the use of the mobile command center for, at the swabbing station when it was so hot during last summer. Incident commands efforts and the great work of the staff at the hospital prevented any transmission of COVID-19 between staff and patients. We're very proud of our staff for their bravery, perseverance, commitment to our patients and community. I cannot speak enough about our staff and what, what they did through the COVID pandemic. They truly are heroes and, and I'm really proud of them for their bravery. They, they are just amazing. And again, just can't speak enough to, to their commitment to our patients. Patient navigation, this is a new program that we're offering our patients and the opportunity to speak with a personal financial navigator to assist with healthcare financial needs and to help reduce barriers and stress related to healthcare costs, visits and treatments. The program is available for all patients from insured to uninsured to underinsured. Our program includes the following assistance to help patients with health insurance plans and addressing any areas of concern, payment plans, patient assistance applications, cost-saving methods for treatments, premium assistance, patient medical assistance, co-pay assistance, foundation assistance and free and replacement drug programs. We assist with applying for Medicaid. We assist with applying for social security disability and assisting with Medicare and supplement plans. So our CARES Act funds that we received, we received a total of 11,622,845 dollars in CARES Act funding. The funding was specifically for the use and preventing, preparing and responding to the COVID pandemic. We've been able to use these funds for both lost revenue and COVID-related expenses. Through December 2020, we were able to reconcile 9,247,016 dollars. And that leaves 2,375,829 for the first six months of 2021. We've had continued expenses related to COVID mostly for additional staffing and PPE. We also experienced lost revenue in those months. The balance of the CARES Act funds will be used to complete the HVAC project, partially funded through SLIB and another project to replace the S1 unit. Both of these projects are expected to be substantially completed by June 30th of 2021, which is the deadline for which we have to use those funds. And HHS has delayed the reporting of these funds. However, audits will be performed on these funds some, sometime in the future. So some of the things that we did for the community, some drive-through services. The first responders meals to go, Rocky Mountain Bank partnered with Sweetwater Memorial and the Memorial Hospital Foundation to provide complimentary to-go lunches for our county's first responders. And that was in October of 2020. We did our Halloween cruise through for our little ghosts and goblins. We had help with Wyoming Radio's party van and also from the, our Rock Springs Police Department for, to direct traffic. We had hundreds of goblins, superheroes, princesses. They all came through and we were so happy to see them, albeit through the drive-through, but we were excited to have them come visit us. And that was also in October. We did our Veterans Day meals to go. Our chef, Chef Leah prepared a beautiful dinner and it was prepared for our veterans' drive-through style. And that was in November and you can see that the snow started by that time, but we were really, really pleased to do that. Very thankful to all of our veterans. And then also our Christmas cruising and we had WOW radio and also assistance from Rock Springs Police Department. And we did that at the front of the hospital. And we also had hundreds of people drive through and we had gifts and things for everybody that came through. And that was in December of 2020. Some statistics for you really quickly, annually, over 13,000 ER visits, over 56,000 clinic visits, over 73,000 lab visits, over 20,000 medical imaging visits, 1773 inpatient admits, 4,841 patient days at our hospital, almost 400 births, over 1,800 surgeries, almost 5,000 dialysis treatments, over 4,200 cancer center visits, over 1,300 physical therapy visits, 5,500 respiratory therapy cardio and sleep lab visits, almost 2,000 cardiac rehab visits. We served 87,000 patient visitor employee meals. And then we also had 355,000 pounds of laundry. And we think we have a fat on the weekends. Our county maintenance fund, then I'll have. So we're extremely grateful to the county commissioners for their assistance with the maintenance fund. At the hospital, we believe that accountability and transparency are paramount when funds are dispersed to public entities. Taylor's passing out the reconciliation of the funds that were allocated to MHSC from the county for the maintenance of the facility. And so you can see on the spreadsheet, it basically talks about the budget that was allocated to us for fiscal year 2021, the 1,448,215. And we've broken it out in routine and capital expenditures. And you can see how all of those funds were spent. And we want to make sure that the, that the county, you know, knows that we're using those funds for maintenance of the hospital. And again, so that the facility can be here in, in Sweetwater County for, for many, many years to come. Special thanks to our liaison commissioner Jeff Smith and all of the board of county commissioners for all your help and support. We're very grateful for all of your support and we, I would open it up to questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Irene?
When do you?
Commissioner Toman?
When do you ever get to sleep? You know, I have an amazing team, Commissioner Toman. They, they're just wonderful and I'm really proud of everybody. Like I said, just getting through COVID and then all of these accomplishments. And again, honestly, this is the condensed version. When I put it all together from what we did, it was, it was much longer. We, we would have had to pack a lunch, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
I, I can say that in my business world, I, I'm not the smartest guy. So I really try to surround myself with excellent people that help me make good decisions. And that's not the case for Irene. She surrounds herself with really smart people, but she's one of those as well. And so kudos to her and to the staff, everybody that does such great work there. It's, it's wonderful working with the board. Wally told me, he said, oh, taking the hospital, you know, you never get reelected if you're the liaison to the hospital. So there's trouble to be had and it's been awesome. It's been wonderful working with them. So kudos to you Irene and, and to all the work with you. It's, it's a, it's a great and wonderful diamond in the rough, I guess we have here that we're so blessed to have. I'm grateful that you're there doing great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Lauren.
I just wanted to say thank you to you and your staff for all of the work that you did through COVID. I mean, you went above and beyond. You partnered with so many different agencies with community help just to make it possible for people to get tested, switching over to the curative system. And all of that was, I mean, there was just so much. The communication coming from the hospital was superb throughout the pandemic. Again, it was top throughout our entire community. And you guys have really shown you're, you're a pillar in our community through COVID and the pandemic and everything. So I just wanted to say thank you. I know that it was so hard for those folks that had to go to work when all the rest of us were working from home and things like that. So.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Good comments, Lauren. Very good. Thank you. Other things, commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a, I've got a couple of questions, but I'll let the other commissioners go first if there's anything.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things that I did, I think that are really important. I had the chance through a grant project I was helped, I'm partially responsible for through Enroll Wyoming to deal with your, to work with your financial navigating departments. And I knew it was newer, but they provided some great assistance. And, and I know through the Enroll Wyoming project, we were really excited through some of the partnerships and ways we were able to help. And I think that's one thing I think you kind of have in your presentation, Irene, but it's missed by the, but it's missed by the importance in the community is the, the number of partnerships you have throughout the community that only enhance the overall positive effect the hospital has on the community. And the other one too is I'm kind of a, a recent development is I've been really excited for my personal life and job was to, I'm, I'm working with your HR department and creating some really cool opportunities for potential employment for folks with disabilities and a volunteerism. And I think that is a, speaks volumes to the willingness of the hospital to help in the community. So I just want to thank you and your staff for everything you do, even tailored to a point, but the rest of your board. But thank you for all the work because really I think some of your contributions aren't as visible, but they're huge and in large steps. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Now I should have done this to begin.
Welcome, Taylor.
I should have done this at the beginning. Would you please introduce your two guests that are with you?
Oh, yes. Thank you. We have Taylor Jones, which is our board president.
Morning, Taylor.
And Tardoni, board secretary. And he's, they're just, they've just been very supportive of us. We've been very fortunate. They're always there whenever we, we need them. Special board meetings, emergency board meetings, just amazing support.
And I agree with you because ever since they took over the task of serving on that board, they have, have been committed and they've, they've carried through on their promises. And, and one of the examples is the spreadsheet regarding the maintenance program. I remember, and I don't know if my fellow commissioners were on at that time, but when we started that, we were promised by your board members a tenacious oversight that, and accountability for that money. And by God, that's the way it's going to be and it has been that way. And, and you've carried through and I, I think Mr. Tardoni was the person at the lead on that, if I remember correctly. And I thank him for that and the other board members supporting him. So that's very well done. So we appreciate that. On your statistics, where you listed laundry visits and that type of thing.
Yes.
I know this has been an exceptional year, but do you track yearly and do any comparisons in those areas as to whether those things are up and down over the fiscal years?
Oh, absolutely. We, we always do that. You know, when, when, in March of 2020, when the elective cases, surgery cases were postponed. And then, you know, we, we saw a huge decrease in volume at that time. And although it's, it's rebounded, it did take some time. It took some time. So these numbers are a little bit lower than previous years. Kind of made budgeting just a little bit of a challenge because we, we kind of looked back at previous years, kind of looked at existing volumes now to try to predict what we think our volumes will look like in the future.
Do, do you expect or are you, as you look at the horizon and you look at, are you looking that within a short amount of time, you'll be back to those numbers and exceeding them? Is that the expectation?
In some areas we, we have. We've already reached our previous pre-COVID numbers. And then also have exceeded some in some areas too.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Very well done. We appreciate it very much. If the commissioners don't have any questions, I have one more question for Irene. It's not with regard to her report, but anything else? We are with the lead of Commissioner Shane Field, Commissioner Lloyd, beginning at the very base work of the Six Penny. And I know a year ago before we abandoned the referendum because of COVID, you had two or a couple of projects, I believe, that you submitted for county sponsorship. Are those projects still thoughts for the Six Penny or have any of them been done or?
We've done, we've done a lot of them through the CARES Act and the SLIB funding. But we would be very, very happy to submit a project if, if the county would sponsor us. We'd be very, very grateful.
I, for one, would certainly support that. I know we have to get our projects submitted from different groups in the community and then decide which ones we're going to sponsor based on what kind of money we're going to allocate. But I just wanted to bring that up, that if you're thinking about something, make sure you like, you know, your liaison or Commissioner Shane Field or Commissioner Lloyd know. And we'll be moving forward. I just trying to give some groups some heads up that I know that in the past we're interested, but there's also some real need in some, some of those groups.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
We do. And I just want to say, you know, had it not been from, to the leadership from the commissioners and Chairman Wendling for the countywide incident command, setting that up, leading the whole COVID incident command pandemic. This community was in good hands from the very beginning due to the leadership at the commissioner level. And we really, really appreciate that. And then again, this community came together as one. Commissioner Lloyd is, is right. We have a lot of community partnerships. We're very grateful for those and very grateful for the support of the community. And, and we're, we're here to help. We're, we're here to do whatever we can for the benefit of the patients in Sweetwater County. And so we're grateful for the commissioners and their leadership. So thank you.
Thank you for everything you do and thank you, board members, for the work you do. And look forward to many years of partnership. Thank you and you enjoy and thanks for sharing and be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, I think up next we're moving into some action items with Public Works. Gina, you're here. Would you be offended if we took a 10-minute break? Thank you.
Correct answer.
Huh? What? I would give you maybe one item or two and then take it. Okay, thank you very much. We'll take a break. We'll start. Commissioners, we'll start right at 10 to 10, please. Commissioners, everybody? 10 to 10, I mean 10 to 12. Thanks. Mary's looking at me like you lost it. I did. Thank you, Mary. 10 to 12. Thank you, Mary. 10 to 12. Danny Armasby, right before that, with personnel. So.
Yeah, I got two and then it.
Okay, we're back live. I'd like to call this meeting back to order and move on with our agenda, uh, starting with tab I. We have a ward of the Lester Folsom Pyramid Reconstruction Project. And uh, I'm sure to Commissioner. He is?
Yeah.
Well, he's on the phone. I don't want to interrupt him. So let's move forward and, and keep going. We got McCorm sitting here. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Um, what this is, is uh, the reconstruction of Lester Folsom Pyramid. It's the three streets out in the north side of Rock Springs, um, north of Rock Springs that are in the southwest corner, basically. It's a mix of industrial and residential out there. So they're hammered streets. They get abused a lot. So we're going to widen them, actually add with to them, actually get drainage out there and, and fix everything, basically. Um, this, all this money comes out of fuel tax, so it has no impact on the budget. Um, I just want to state that. So it's fuel tax money. Um, one of the things I'd like to point out is if you guys notice, um, the engineer's estimate was $80,389 under. The reason that happens is when you do an engineer's estimate, typically what you do is you do an engineer's estimate and then you send out plans to everybody and they have about a month before they turn it back in. Typically, we never look at those engineers estimate after we do them. We didn't do that. When we got back and I was eight percent less, I was like, oh man, what did we do? And all of that is because of inflation. There was three major items in there and they're all relate, all related to items with um, oil resin products that are on that job. And those are way higher than what we've ever, ever experienced. I did budget 1.5 million out of the fuel tax account for this next year. So we're covered on that. But I just wanted to point that out that that's the type of inflation we're seeing in materials. It's insane. So.
All right. Thank you, Gene. In fact, you stole my question. I appreciate you throwing that out there and let us know. I think, I think also it's just needs, probably maybe an example of what's ahead as we move forward, not only in the construction business, but expenses in business in general, um, not only running core government, but everything else. Um, I did not through the budget process, ask anybody if they budgeted for inflation. But I guess we'll get through it anyhow. But thank you very much. Questions for Gene regarding this project, Commissioners? Your pleasure Commissioners and authorize this chairman to sign documents?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I'll make a motion to award the bid for Lester um, Drive Pyramid Drive Folsom Drive Reconstruction Project to Kilgore Companies doing business as Lewis and Lewis, um, in the sum of 1,475,468 and authorize the chairman to sign all necessary project documents.
Got a motion to approve and authorize the chairman by Commissioner Shanefield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Gene. Next up will be tab I, tab J. Award of fiscal year 21 County Road Paint Striping Project. Gene?
Okay, again, this is an annual maintenance contract. This actually comes out of fuel tax also. You'll notice the engineer's estimate is higher than the contractor, which is good. But after we, we bid the Folsom project on Tuesday, this didn't bid until Thursday. I relooked at my numbers and I bumped them eight percent. So that's the reason we're higher because of inflation. Um, the interesting thing about that is most people don't realize paint, uh, resin and stuff like that is made in Houston. Houston had a huge flood, if you don't remember a while ago, so it's still behind. They're going to try to get it done this year, but I might be, it depends on the paint comes in. They're struggling with the, the yellow and the white highway paint everywhere. So if you've seen white dot, they usually do stuff already and they're really slow because they're having a hard time getting paint because of the, the resin comes out of Houston. So talk about a global supply chain.
Okay, thank you, Gene. Questions Commissioners? One question. When you say get it done this year, you mean the summer, this fall?
The summer, this fall. Yeah, the, the, the due date September 15th, um, depending on, he thinks he'll get paint August, but he doesn't know if he'll get all the paint for the project. So we might all come to ask you guys for a change order of time if we need to, but he's really shooting to get it done. And this guy's, SNL has done this for eight of the last 10 years. They're very well familiar with the project. So he's going to try to move some stuff around and get it.
And they've done a good job.
They've done a great job.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, you've heard the presentation. Uh, what's your pleasure regarding um, approving the uh, application and authorizing chairman to sign it?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lloyd.
I would award, I'd recommend we award the bid for the fiscal year 2021 Sweetwater County Paint Strapping Project to SNL Industries in the sum of 348, 800, 348,836 dollars and 60 cents and authorize the chairman to sign all pro, all needed documents.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve the application, authorize chairman to sign it. Is there a second?
No second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Moving on, tab K. BLM application for County Road Number 33, Bohemian Gorge Road Extension in Sage Creek. Gene, he's improvements. Gene, you're up.
So if you remember this, I brought this before you guys about a month ago. Um, and through the BLM process, we found out that the road that connects those two roads together is actually in the wrong section. So it was built 50 years ago, 300 feet in the wrong section. So we had to go through the BLM permit to, we had to upgrade our BLM permit to actually include that 892 foot of road. Um, so we can make sure that this trotted limited project gets built correctly. So that's all it was, is a change from what you guys originally asked to include the road.
Okay, questions for Mr. Legursky? Pretty good example, explanation of what happened. We'll fix it.
Yeah, we'll fix it. It's by about 300 feet.
All right, Commissioners, is there any questions? Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding proving the BLM application to install the grade control structures in Sage Creek and allow the chairman to sign?
Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner.
Me.
By Commissioner, I looked at my form and, and I saw something else. I'm sorry, Commissioner. To approve and authorize chairman to sign. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. I didn't ask for any discussion. Was there any discussion? Oh, I know it. I do. All right. So no discussion. We had a motion to prove. We had a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Gene. Sorry about that. Anyhow, up next under tab L will be a quest to prove, request approval to staff seasonal positions in the road and bridge department. With that is Mr. Legursky and uh, Mr. McLean. I think this follow-up from previous meeting is correct.
That's correct.
McLean, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Commissioners, uh, your eyes aren't deceiving you. We discussed this at the last meeting. And uh, I'm sure you're wondering why it's back on here. Well, the reason it's back on here, um, as you know, we've had a good relationship with Climb Wyoming, had a good experience with the program. And uh, due to uh, a leave in the department, um, we had requested the board to fill um, a four month position, two of which would be funded by Climb Wyoming. They no longer have a funded personnel for the program. So um, we're back before you today, uh, asking if we could restaff the position with the former Climb Wyoming person who is actually available, uh, that had worked for us before, but it'll no longer be, two months of that won't be subsidized. Now, this is an additional cost. The person that's on leave is, is unpaid. So um, this is not increasing the budget. But um, anyway, we would like to request to fill, um, the former Climb Wyoming person that worked for us last year is available. But there will be no subsidy uh, for that program. We're not asking for change in budget, just to um, have that position work for the four months or until the uh, individual comes back to work, if that's sooner.
Thank you, Gary. Gene, anything to add?
No, I think Gary covered it. Um, it was just one of those things. They don't have anybody available. And uh, the person we actually hired last year just got laid off because they're almost done with all, a lot of the dirt on interchange projects. So it actually worked out. I said, hey, this person's available. So.
And just recollection for me was, I think at our last meeting, we specifically said, go to climb and not look elsewhere if there was nobody available. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, you probably didn't say that, but we did.
We're, we're all in this together.
Yeah. So we, we probably were unnecessarily narrow in that request, but be that as it may.
Thank you for bringing that back forward because that's the right thing to do. Commissioners, any questions for Gene or Gary? Commissioners, your pleasure regarding this position. Commissioner Shanefield.
Make a motion to approve the um, position even without the subsidy as presented.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Chairman to sign.
And allow chairman to sign. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Thank you. Next on our agenda under tab M, I believe, is request to restaff a vacant position in the attorney's office. Mr. McLean, um, is Danny Armasby on? Oh, there he is.
Better.
Good morning. Good morning, attorney.
Good morning.
All right, Mr. McLean, you can have floor and you, you can introduce your guest with you there if you'd like.
Well, I think he, he doesn't need introduction. Yes. It's like, it's like Madonna. Uh, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, um, as you recall, um, over the past year, um, we had a number of positions um, in various departments that took early retirement or uh, just retired. Um, in the county attorney's office, um, we actually had four positions that had left at different times. And um, as uh, the county attorney had indicated, we'd be back at some point to request restaffing, you know, uh, at least one or, or more of those positions as the need came up, but not until those positions um, had broke even in terms of their savings and recovered the, the cost as part of the program. So today, um, we had a legal assistant that had taken the program, uh, early retirement program. That position broke even uh, in terms of uh, the cost to fund the program, pay out sick leave, vacation and any other payout costs. That was effective 5/12, May 12th uh, of this year. Um, her separation date was back in um, 10/7 of 20. And um, so before you, as a request in your packet to restaff that position, that um, position, we expect coming in more of an entry level. So there would be some inherent savings um, also in that the individual who was in there was at a um, a higher level. And then obviously depending upon the health insurance, we've budgeted that at family insurance, but there may be some additional savings there depending on the health insurance rate. And so that's kind of why we're here. Uh, Dan, if you want to add anything in terms of where you're at staffing level in your office.
Okay. Uh, also we have um, we're two other, if this gets filled, we're still two down and we're going to continue to go forward on that. One is a full-time victim coordinator. Another one is a legal assistant. We have, uh, this is, this is needed and it's needed right now. We have one legal assistant handling the work of three attorneys. And uh, it, and when summer comes up and vacations are held and we have people going from Green River to Rock Springs to work the front desk and, and everything like that. So it's really uh, putting a burden on the legal staff. Uh, at least the, the legal assistant. So it's something that, you know, we're going to continue to go forward with those two down as long as we possibly can. But as far as filling this one, it's, it's something that I think is needed right now.
Thank you, Danny. Commissioners, questions for either attorney Armasby or Mr. McLean? Commissioner Shanefield?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out, I had conversation. Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out, I had conversation with Danny and John yesterday and they they talked a little bit about some similar counties and the work that they're doing and even pointed out, I mean, Gillette Campbell County has a very similar caseload, similar population, similar similar issues within that population. And their budget's one million dollars higher than what our county attorney's offices. I just, I think he's doing a great job of, you know, utilizing every service that he can and, you know, cutting where he can and doing doing a good job with that. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
I agree. Hundred percent. You've always done with what you have and tried to do more and in continue to be a team player as many of our other directors and elected officials. So thank you, Danny.
You're welcome. I I learned early on in athletics with flat feet, hyperextended knees and lack of height that you have to do with what you can, with what you have, so. It's innate in me.
How well we know that.
He's been waiting all day to use that one.
Way to go. Way to go. Good time. Other questions? Commissioner Toman?
Thank you for Mr. De Leon. Very much.
Yeah, I.
He's very much appreciated.
I take full credit of that guy.
I think it's because you're sheep herder roots, so.
You know, we have to work for you. Yeah.
You have a good staff and.
Thank you.
They do a good job for the county and we appreciate all of them, every every one of them. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Okay, commissioners, your pleasure regarding the restaffing of a vacant position in the attorney's office.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Toman.
I'd be happy to make a motion to replace your one legal assistant.
And authorize chairman to sign.
And authorize the chairman to.
Okay, we got a motion to restaff the vacant position and authorize chairman to sign. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you all.
Take care. Be safe. All right, Mr. McLean, you're still up because we have approval of the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two VSO MOU. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Commissioners, at the last meeting, we had a discussion about some of the services and the origin of veteran services, especially the tri-county veteran services program. And during that meeting, I'd mentioned to you that because of some of the changes, especially the agreement with the state, subsidizing some of the costs from Lincoln County, that we would have an amended agreement. That is the agreement that's before you today. And the agreement basically, in short, says that each will be responsible for the costs of their own programs. And in the case of the Lincoln County, the Lincoln County Veteran Services Officer currently goes one day a week to Evanston as part of an agreement which is attached and referenced herein and provide services in Evanston on behalf of the state. Those are reimbursed dollar for dollar. So those dollar-for-dollar reimbursements would reimburse their portion of the costs. Effectively, if you look at the attached budget, that would reduce the budget approximately seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars a year in in terms of the net reimbursement from the state of Wyoming. Other than that, basically, the agreement is spelling out that the counties will be responsible for providing the facilities, covering costs that are needed for equipment, materials, travel, training and other things necessary to do the job. So essentially what we do is we throughout the year, we will send them an invoice for their portion of the costs. And then those will be processed and paid back to us and received into the into the general, the general fund. So roughly speaking, the programs cost each entity around ninety thousand dollars. It varies a little bit because some of them are at higher rates of pay or health insurance, but roughly it ends up about ninety thousand dollars per each for a total of around two seventy with the reduction of seventeen thousand, five hundred for Lincoln County. So I I think it's a, it's pretty effective program. And as I indicated last time, I think the only real improvement would be if the state would be willing to recognize that we're the only entity that they're not spending a dollar of state money on to provide veteran resources. But other than that, I'll stand behind the record of the services provided to veterans in the western third Wyoming. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Commissioners, questions? Comments? Pleasure regarding the VSO MOU agreement and authorizing the chairman to sign.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Sweetwater Sublet and Lincoln Counties for county-based veteran services and authorize the chairman to sign.
Got a motion to approve and authorize chairman to sign the MOU for VSO services as second.
Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to second that motion.
Got a second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Gary. Continue the good work and.
Thank you for a great program.
See you this afternoon. Thank you.
For sure, for sure. Okay, moving forward, tab O, which is our board vacancies. Before we move into them, commissioners, just under library as well as museum, Sally, I believe, in her emailed us additional applicants. So I know at our last meeting when we chose a board member, we did accept late applicants. Am I correct? At the last point once, I believe, Sally. So that kind of is going to send a set of precedents for setting, accepting late applicants if you choose to as a board and that type of thing. And with that in mind, are we ready to move forward? Go ahead.
Predator Board, Josh Corsi has had to withdraw his, because he is moving to Cameron.
He did. Okay.
Sent me a text earlier.
Okay, that brings to mind for that Predator Board, and when I saw Josh's name on it, was he the only applicant?
No, we have an incumbent. I think.
They got incumbent, okay.
I don't know if he, if there's a term limit.
Okay, we'll get to that one and look at it, okay? All right, thank you, because I know the last time we did one of those, either Predator or Weed and Pest, and we just got to watch those edges, right? Okay, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and get started. I think with our board vacancies, first one up is community fine arts. And with that, I believe our liaison to that would be tied to the library, which I believe Commissioner Lloyd, are you there?
I am here.
All righty, but you but you work with Jason.
He is all the way down at the other end.
Hey, this guy down here.
All righty, so anyway, go ahead, Commissioner Lloyd. Your, and then you give your thoughts and we'll see if anybody else has anything to say.
Did have a lot of feedback from Jason, but in reviewing the applications, I would recommend that we reappoint Jacob Muldowney and then Autumn Williams.
Okay, let's do one at one at a time.
Jacob Muldowney would be the first one and he would be a reappointment.
Okay, so you have a motion to reappoint Jacob Muldowney to the Fine Arts Center Board? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Okay, now to fill the other spot.
I really don't know any of these three. Like I said, didn't, I wasn't able to get a lot of feedback and that's partly my fault. But looking at the applications, I I felt Autumn Williams would be the best appointment. But if anyone knows any of the other candidates and has any opinion, I would be willing to listen to that. But my recommendation at this point would be Autumn Williams.
So your favorite is Autumn Williams?
William, it's, yeah.
Williams, okay.
Williams.
Oh, I see. I think, yeah. Thank you, Roy, but I think it might be a misspell. Okay, going down the line, any thoughts? Commissioner Toman, anybody else you see there? Mr. Shanefield?
I think that that's a good choice.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Sounds good.
All right, Commissioner Lloyd, I'll entertain a motion.
I would, did we decide Sally if that was Williams or, okay, that's my fault too. So I I recommend that we would appoint Autumn Williams to the Community Fine Arts Center Board.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Ms. Williams to the Fine Arts Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Good job. Next up will be our Health Board and pretty unique board, I think, Commissioner Smith, you serve as liaison because some requirements are required to serve on that board, i.e. doctors and stuff like that. So with that, would you like to update us on Health Board and your thoughts?
Yes, I have two vacancies on this board and two recommendations for who to fill those, although I don't see one of them as an applicant, so we didn't receive any late applicants for Board of Health. Kathy Coomer? Could we defer this to the last one? Could we push this to the last one?
Sure.
If that's okay?
Yeah, that's okay. Let's back up and defer this one to the last one as based on your quest and then let me say something.
Sure.
For the rest of the board appointments, which I should have said at the beginning. As we move forward now, we do have a new board application process that's does, that's done online through, I believe, the HR office where they'll fill out and indicate their desire to serve on boards. They're supposed to pick no more than two boards. In some of this transition, people have picked more than two boards. In fact, they picked all of them. So we have to kind of look at things and and realize that, hey, through the transition, it was a mistake or it wasn't a mistake. So we may end up choosing somebody if we say, hey, it's okay to do all the appointments because we'd like, we think they'd be a good board member. When Sally contacts them, if they decline it, we may be back at the next meeting to correct it. But keep in mind, we're in a transition from the old way where they got online, got the application and or they stopped in the office, printed, mailed it in or whatever, transitioning to a whole new online thing. Now, the other thing that's unique about the online, and I I want to say this, it it's a little more involved, but I think it falls in line with some commissioner requests of getting more information about the board applicants. So on it, request a resume and that type of thing. Which in turn, we got to keep in mind, that may discourage some good board members from applying. So as we work through this process and transition, keep in mind that Sally will continually check and watch for any that are mailed in and we will continue to include them as well for a period of time, I think up to two years, because that's how long they're active. And then at the end of that time, we'll go full online. But we need to encourage now, online, when we talk in our board groups where there's board appointments and and I'm the worst one. I always tell them, get ahold of Sally or get online and fill the form out, but that we presently have on our webpage. So we all got to just kind of remind them and realize we will have a transition period. Be patient. We want good people on these boards and sometimes that means reworking our work, but that's okay. That's why we're here. Any questions regard to that or any more input anybody would like to say regarding the process?
She would. She's got.
Yes, Sally.
Chairman Menling, if I can add, if people do not have access to the website, our human resource department has a computer allocated for them and they can fill it out right there.
Thank you very much. It's good information. So, all right. Anything else, commissioners, before we move on? Let's take Health Board and move it to the bottom. It'll be last under Star Transit. Is that okay, Commissioner?
Yes.
Very good. All right, let's move on. Library Board. And I believe our liaison to Library Board is Commissioner Lloyd. Is that correct?
Correct.
Very good, sir. Why don't you give us a rundown when you?
Yeah, the the recommendation from the Library Board would be to continue to reappoint Alisa Robbins, who did send in a message to Sally that she was interested. She's actually out of country right now and that's part of the reason her application was not in. But she did, she is interested in reappointments and that's what Jason and the board would recommend. I do want to say that I I seen Lenora Perry apply for a couple and I think she would be a solid board member on a lot of different places. And but in this case, I would recommend I'd make the motion to reappoint Alisa Robbins to the Library Board.
Okay, before we do a motion, let's see where the other commissioners are at, because I do believe we had an applicant can come in late, Mark Cott.
No, he was museum.
Oh, the museum. Thank you. All right, it was Megan Jensen? Yep, so. Am I on the right board? Library? Okay, very good. So let's move down. Any other thoughts, Mr. Commissioner Toman?
No.
Shanefield? Mr. Smith, good to go. I'm good to go. Okay, now Commissioner Lloyd, if you'd like to.
Yeah, I'd like to make our motion once again to reappoint Alisa Robbins to the Library Board.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion to appoint.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just wanted to note that there is a two-term limit for the Library Board.
Okay. And what is that, John?
I'm sorry?
What's the new term limit?
There's a two, two-term.
Okay.
Two consecutive terms and then you can get back on the board after two years have passed. But I just wanted to make that clarification. I didn't know, you said reappoint and I, so I just didn't know her.
I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think this would only be her second term, but I'm not a hundred percent. It is, okay.
All right, thank you, Sally. Thank you for the point order, John, because those are things we want to keep an eye on. So anyhow, we'll move on forward with the motion and the second to reappoint Lisa Robbins for her second term on the Library Board. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. It would be her second term. Oh, there wasn't? I'm sorry, we had a motion. Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving into the next one, I believe, will be the Museum Board. Is that correct? And with that, Commissioner Shanefield.
Yes, so we also received one from Mark Cott coming in. And the recommendation from the Museum Board is to appoint Mark to that. He's been long involved with the museum and has a good relationship with their director and is very excited to be involved in that.
Wow.
So that is my motion.
Okay, and there's nobody else there, so I guess you can vote him up or vote him down. So we have a motion to appoint Mark Cott to the Library or to the Museum Board. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Toman. There's a second. Any further discussion? That was a great late last moment application and it was. And I I just really excited for the Museum Board and excited for Mark. Okay, call him for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Next up, planning and zoning. I think Ms. Toman?
Yes.
You are part of planning and zoning, so would you like to recap and give us your thoughts, please?
I would recommend reappointing Angela Wilson, the current chairman.
Okay, very good. I I think that's a good point.
I'm not sure about term limits on that.
No, I think we're okay term limits, talking with Eric. But let's take a moment and see if any other commissioners might have a thought about any of the other applicants. Not that there's any issue with that one, but we do have other applicants, I believe. Commissioner Lloyd, anything?
No, I think appointing, I do agree with Ms. Toman that appointing Angela Wilson would be a solid move.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Shanefield. Commissioner Smith?
I would agree with that as well.
All righty, very good. Commissioner Toman, your motion stands?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Toman to reappoint Angela Wilson. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Angela, congratulations. Welcome back. Okay, next up, Predatory Board, I believe. And we have a three-year term due to expiring. That's John Dean Lane. John D is available for reappointment. We do have some new applicants, Christopher Castigan. Did I say that right? But he applied for all boards. And then, of course, Josh Corsi's withdrawn. Is that correct, Commissioner Toman?
Yeah, yes, he won't be eligible.
Okay, then Sheldon Beard, who also applied for all boards, and Nathan Noble. So with that, commissioners, I, you know, did not get a chance to talk to their board chairman or anything, see their thoughts. Mary, do you know any of them?
I don't. So I guess I would recommend John D Lane, a reappointment.
I would agree.
Not been exceeded.
Yeah, and Sally just referred to me that Bill. Yeah, and Sally just referred to me that Bill Tollferro touched base with the and recommended a reappointment for John D. So I think, would Commissioner Smith agree?
Yes.
Shanefield? Commissioner Lloyd? I'd agree. Okay, Commissioner Toman, would you repeat your motion, please?
I would, yes, I would make a motion to reappoint John D. Lane.
Very good. Thank you. We have a motion to reappoint John D. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Okay, next up, we have the Farson Eden Solid Waste District. I believe we have two applicants. One applicant did submit, and it does have a term limit, though, and that type of thing. And then we have a new applicant, Jeremiah Smith. I truly believe both applicants are very good and that type of thing. I don't think we could make a mistake either way, but I think I had heard, you know, there's been some thought in the past that, you know, let's really respect term limits from this commission. Am I correct? And I think if that's the case, then commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Toman?
I would like to recommend Jeremiah Smith.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Jeremiah Smith to the Solid Waste Disposal District in Farson Eden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lloyd?
On discussion, I would like, I think I would be remiss. I don't know Mr. Burnett, but he's served on this board for over almost 19, 20 years, and I'd be remiss not to thank him for his time of service over that long on a volunteer board and eight years actually after the statute. So I do think it does make sense to move forward with Jeremiah Smith, but I do think we should thank him for such longevity and volunteerism, so.
Thank you. And I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to, as well as I'm going to expound on what you said. I'm going to go back to the history where I came onto the commission. And at that time, they had board members, and James Burnett was on that board, and he was chairman. And when I came aboard, that was probably right in the middle of the crux of the closing of the open pit out there and the design of the transfer station and getting it up and going. And of course, with DEQ's regulations and stuff, it was very, very known that in order to permit a new open pit for them, it was financially unsound and highly not recommended. And of course, Mr. Burnett served on that board, as well as other board members that are still there or have moved on and maybe come back and that. But they did a great job, as hard as it was, and the people out there, you know, they asked a lot of questions, a few meetings I was at, got their answers and that type of thing. But that, Mr. Burnett facilitated not only the transfer station coming in with the rest of the board, but also the covering of that pit, which if you drive out there now, it is covered. And they're beginning to move on containers and load off containers out there to help the people manage to keep the pit open longer than what was recommended by DEQ to help the people out. So yes, I agree with you over the years. He has been a mainstay for that board. I truly believe when this commission reappointed him even after his term limits, it was to see that this process was followed through to meet DEQ regulations and stuff, but also to put in place a system that would help the residents out there. The huge thing about what's happened with our assess valuation with that special district, revenue is dropping, and they are starting to experience even greater issues to where that board will have before them as to making decisions how they want to run that waste district. So just a little background and a little, a whole lot of praise for that board and the leadership that Mr. Burnett has shown. But at some point in time, I think it's time that we give it a break. But again, too, like I believe John had mentioned on another board, that they can take a break and reapply and come back. So with that, I'll call for the question. All those, did you have a question, Mary?
I just think I'd be remiss if I didn't comment. I think we do owe Mr. Burnett a huge thanks, a voice of gratitude. But I do believe that we should respect some term limits, and I guess I wouldn't have spoken up if I hadn't received several comments from the community about an opportunity to have somebody, some others be able to participate. That was the main concern. The other concern is that that is a taxing district, and there were some concerns over, they already paid a tax, and now if they have to pay additional fees. So I just would be remiss if I didn't share the citizen concerns that I've heard.
And I think they're legit, if I may comment. And I know we want to get to the question. And that'll be a struggle for that board. That'll be a struggle for that community to figure out how they're going to keep that pit open based on whatever revenue they get. But they know that, and I think now they have an opportunity to find where they're going to get additional funding to keep that going if they run into a revenue issue. But thank you for your comments, and I'm going to tell you, they're right on and that type of thing, as well as the other commissioners. So may I call for the question?
Yes.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate all that input. Southwest Counseling is next. So Commissioner Smith is?
That's me.
That would be you. Would you like to give us synopsis and your thoughts before I move forward with everybody else?
Sure. Four vacancies on here, and so a little, you know, we got a bulk turnover or change. Because of that, I, in discussions, you know, want to be careful in changing over a board of eight or nine, I think it is, with four new. And so recommendations to keep Jackie Grubb and Amy Galley on as current members and extend their terms again. And then Kayleen Logan and Kristi Capi as well, to as new appointments.
Just, okay, so that, with that, I got a question. When you brought it up, is that seven-member board, isn't it?
Something like that.
Yeah, so this is a quorum. So yes, something to be very careful with.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Shanefield, your thoughts with regard to Southwest Counseling?
I agree.
You're fully agreement. You're okay there? Commissioner Toman?
I'm not familiar with the candidates, but I'm fine.
You're fine with the recommendation. Thank you very much. Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, I think those are solid recommendations, and I think we can, it wasn't, Jackie Grubb's not been on the board a ton, because we appointed her to fill a term. So, you know, there's still a lot of newness there. But I do want to specifically mention that Kayleen Logan, I think, will be an absolute benefit to that board with her years of experience as a psychiatric nurse in the years she worked at Southwest Counseling. I think that's a huge addition to that board.
Yeah, I thank you for that, because I looked at the applicants, and they're all good. They're all good. So we couldn't go wrong. So I will support Commissioner Smith's recommendation. Commissioner Smith, you got a motion?
I do. I move that we approve Jackie Grubb to a position on the Southwest Counseling Board.
Okay, let's do one at a time. Thank you. We got a motion for Jackie Grubb to be reappointed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Is that correct? I heard the lady's voice just a little bit quicker, Commissioner Lloyd. Okay, any further discussion?
I need one of those voice changer machines so that we don't sound, you know.
You do. Thank you for that.
The guy's made her voice or something.
I keep asking myself, you do.
Buzzers, like Jeopardy or something.
Jeopardy. All right, we got a motion to appoint Jackie Grubb, reappoint Jackie Grubb. We got a second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Commissioner Smith, number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve Amy Galley for a position on the Board of Southwest Counseling.
We got a motion to reappoint Amy Galley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Your third.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Kayleen Logan for a position on the Southwest Counseling Board.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Kayleen Logan as a new appointee to the Southwest Counseling Board. Is there a second?
I would, I would make that appointment. You can do the next one.
You make that second?
Yes, I would make that.
Thank you, Commissioner Toman. We have a motion and a second to appoint Kayleen Logan to the Southwest Counseling Board. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And your fourth appointment, Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Kristi Capi for a position on the Southwest Counseling Board.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith to appoint Kristi Capi to the Southwest Counseling Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner?
It's his turn.
His turn, Commissioner Lloyd. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? You guys are killing me. No, you're fine. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All righty, moving on, we have one, we have two left. We've got Star Transit. Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, there's two openings due to expiring terms of James Love and Joe Zanetti, and neither have reapplied. I do want to thank, I've been involved with them on the board now for a couple of years, and want to thank them for their time. They bring good input and both have history in the field of transportation due to time at LaBuss. We could only, we only have one applicant, so I would move to approve Alexandria Roberson for one of the two openings.
Okay, we only have one applicant for two openings, so a motion has been made to approve Alexandria Roberson as a new appointee to Starbus, Star Transit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Without a, with a second opening, we will hold until we get applications. Is that okay? Ms. Schumaker, Commissioner Lloyd?
Yes.
All right, very good. Moving on, we go from Star Transit all the way back up to Board of Health. Are you thinking you're ready, Commissioner?
Certainly with one, there's some confusion. Is there, is there an opportunity that we could perhaps push the second to the next meeting?
If that's your recommendation, and it's supported by the commission, yes.
Thank you. Hopefully, my fellow commissioners will.
Well, let's go on. Commissioners, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Yes.
You got it. We'll do one, Jeff.
Thanks. Then I recommend that, or I move that we appoint Shazia Hock to the Board of Health.
Okay, we got a motion to appoint new applicant Shazia Hock to the Sweetwater County Health Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll hold off then. If that's the case, I do, I do see, you know, we've got good applicants, but let's make sure we're getting what that board needs.
I appreciate that. I got some sideways information.
That's okay.
Was recommended for somebody who isn't on this list.
I would rather.
Get it straightened out.
Yeah, I'd rather wait and do it right than have to correct. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. So any questions on board appointments, commissioners? Good process. Thank you. Okay, up next, tab P is Emergency Medical Ambulance Service Contract and Second Extension for Sweetwater Medics, and that is scheduled at 1:15. You know, we're way ahead of schedule, commissioners, and I.
It's not going to stay that way, Don.
Oh, it's not. It's not.
Never does.
Okay, let me look down a little bit. We got both of the ambulance services later.
Can skip over the acceptance of the resignation.
With you executive.
Yeah, we could skip that. No. My, I'm wondering if, let's, let's take a 10-minute short break. Sally, will you contact Rob and Bonnie and see if they could come in and we could do those two? And then we'll watch our screen to see if the ambulance groups come aboard, and we'll interject them. Commissioners, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, very good. 10-minute break. 10 to 1. 10 to 1. We're going to skip Tab P and Tab Q, which is the service, ambulance service contracts for Castle Rock and Sweetwater Medics. We'll move those to after Tab S, when, if, in case they're here at their appointed time. But at this time, I'd like to move forward with Tab R, which is the accept the resignation of County Treasurer, Rob Slaughter. Commissioners, at our last meeting, we were notified that Mr. Slaughter would be resigning after July 1st. And at that point in time, then, that would kick in the process for the appointment of an interim, to finish out his term as treasurer. I believe that process will follow along the line that had a, after a certain amount of time, the, well, the Democratic Party will be notified, and then they will submit to the county commissioners three names. I believe it'll be for our second meeting in July. Is that correct, John?
The letter does have a specific date and is asking the committee to submit the letter on that specific day.
Exactly, and I believe we, I believe Commissioners, you have that letter? If I'm not mistaken.
I don't recall that.
No, you don't have it.
Okay.
No, no, you got his resignation. But. Hang on, I do have the letter. I will get it and I will read it to you. Bear with me.
Well, Mr. Slaughter, you're just going to have to keep working, I guess.
That's right.
Oh, you have a hard copy in here? You didn't.
Want me to send it?
Yeah.
Send it right now.
John has the letter.
No, I ha, I have it. I just didn't, I didn't bring it up. I apologize. But I, I think it's important that you, as Commissioners, see the letter. Or hear it at least. Here we go. Thank you. Okay, but anyhow, here's, here's the letter that will be sent to, I believe it's Ms. Jensen, who, Megan Jensen, is Chairwoman of the Democratic Central Committee. Please be advised that Rob Slaughter, Sweetwater County, Sweetwater, Wyoming County Treasurer, has announced and submitted his resignation with his last day being July 1, 2021. County Treasurer Slaughter was the Democratic successor appointed in 1993. County Treasurer Slaughter was duly elected County Treasurer in 1994 in each general election thereafter until 2018, representing the Democratic Party. The Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners formally accepts Treasurer Slaughter's resignation and declares a vacancy as of July 2nd, 2021. This letter is to serve as written notice of the vacancy to Sweetwater Democratic Central Committee. Pursuant to Wyoming Statute 22-1811AII, please call a meeting of the County Central Committee on or after July 2nd, 2021, and at the meeting, select three persons qualified to fill the vacancy and transmit the names to the Board of County Commissioners on Friday, July 16th, 2021, between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Please be advised, the Sweetwater County Board of Commissioners will receive the list of three names on July 16th, 2021, and will address the vacancy by appointment of one of the three central committee selection at the July 20th Regular Board of County Commissioners Meeting. Sincerely signed by the Chairman. Specifically turned in on the 16th, I will ask that, that letter go to Sally's office. Isn't, I believe that's where it will be turned in. And it's not to, if it's received before the 16th, do not accept it, Sally. Do not open it and tell the delivery to bring it on the 16th and no sooner. Okay, and then that gives us as Commission, our, by statute, that meeting, the 20th, work on it. Otherwise, we'd have to call a special meeting. Okay, so that's the letter that will be sent out. Any questions about the letter? Go ahead, Mr. Shanefield.
Not necessarily about the letter, but the process in between the letter and our meeting. Will we receive those names so that we can begin doing our research and before we get our packets, or will it just be included in our packets?
We will, in the past, it's always been in our packets, I believe. So that's when we'll get it. I'm sure, I'm sure, once it's submitted to Sally on the 16th in her office, then it becomes public record. Am I correct, Mr. DeLeon?
That is correct. I mean, the committee certainly can, you know, identify however they would like to identify to the public.
That's true.
But the letter would be received as the Chairman identified on the 16th.
And that's when it would be official.
Thank you.
You'd certainly be okay on the late afternoon of the 16th, check with Sally and see what the names are, and then you can begin your thinking process, and we will do interviews on the 20th for those candidates. Now, with the process, with the process, two things can occur on the 20th. One, a majority of the board is satisfied with selecting an appointment. They get appointed. The board may not reach a majority. And therefore, we would have X number of days to call a special session to address the issue and to appoint. Again, if we don't appoint at that special session, then it would be assigned to the District Court. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then want to be assigned to one of the judges, and then that judge would open it up to anybody in the party, Democratic Party, and then would, I believe, assign. Yeah, a treasurer to the county for, you know, to carry out and then for the rest of this term. Okay, questions? Anything to add, John?
No.
Okay, so, that's the letter that will be sent. And Sally and I will make a personal phone call to remind the Chairman not to bring that letter in because it won't be accepted till the 16th. But before we can send the letter, Commissioners? We need to have someone entertain this motion. The motion that the Sweetwater County, I'd entertain a motion that the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners accepts Sweetwater County Treasurer Slaughter's resignation, declaring a vacancy as of July 2nd, 2021, and that written notice to the Sweetwater County Democratic Central Committee is signed by the Chairman.
So moved by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Your patience is greatly appreciated. All right, with that, moving on. The next up, we will have a look at the reserves, and here to help us with that is Ms. Berry. Was Rob going to be on, or has he gone to lunch?
He was gone to lunch, so I'm not sure if he'll make it or not before this is over.
I do believe we did receive a recommendation email this morning from you, I believe.
Yes, that's correct. And I discussed this with Rob yesterday.
And I believe that's what your email had said, so.
So hopefully, he's okay with whatever we decide.
And you know, we can, and if. Yes, and we can always check with him and fix it. Okay?
Okay.
All right, but let's move forward. So, Ms. Berry, welcome again. Afternoon, good afternoon.
Thank you.
And the floor is yours.
Okay, as we've been discussing, we discussed this last year as well. We have several reserve accounts, and the, some of them have been on there for many years, and some of them have been added. And we, we have discussed changing some of these. It does take a motion to reserve or to remove some of these reserve designations that previous commissions have made. So I just wanted to discuss this with you. We will be approving the budget resolution this Thursday. So if, if this is to be done before that, a motion would need to be made today to, to remove these designations and to potentially decide on some new designations for our reserves. I did speak with Rob yesterday. We met to talk about, kind of, some recommendations on, on what, what would be appropriate for the county. The, the commission previously decided that they wanted to set the minimum reserve level at 25 million. So we went off of that decision made by the commission. And we decided that it would be appropriate, according to the investment policy and just the amount of money that is spent throughout the year and the cash swings that we have to appropriate $10 million in operating reserves. This, this will cover the cash flow needs that we need throughout the year. Just so you know, on, the reserves are set as of June 30th, and that's about the highest level we ever get to. And during the year, tho, that re, that reserve level goes down as we spend money. We collect a lot of money in November and in May for the mill levy, and then also we collect a kind of a big chunk in late June with the pilt. So that's why our reserves are so high at the end of June, but, but we use about eight to nine million dollars during the year of that money. So we can't get below what we need to make payroll. Otherwise, we can't pay our employees and we can't pay our bills. So we need to keep that $10 million. So my recommendation, well, our recommendation for that was just operating reserves, just so we can always keep that in there and, and use it for cash flow needs. The second recommendation was 15 million, and the 10 million plus the 15 million equals the 25 million that the board has decided on to keep in reserves. I, I would think an appropriate title would that be, would be emergency reserves for that, just to keep it in there, and it would just be used for emergencies since the board has decided to not go below that 25 million. Rob thought it would be more appropriate just to put 13 million in there for general fund reserves, and then 2 million for employee reserves. That way, if there was a point where we needed to give the employees a raise or something like that, that we would have that 2 million designated for that. The reason I didn't feel that was appropriate. The reason I didn't feel that was appropriate because the board capped it at 25 million anyway, so if it's in that 25 million, I don't feel like it's going to be used. So that was just a difference of opinion that we had, but that was his recommendation. And then we put in there 8,224,631 and we call that infrastructure reserves or economic development reserves. That came from Doc's suggestion to put the American Rescue Plan money towards possibly the Middle Baxter Road project. So that's where that came from. Where we were trying to read your minds and, and come up with what we thought you wanted. So that was, that was one suggestion for that was either infrastructure reserves or economic development reserves. We could call it one of those two things. And then the rest, which is approximately 25, or 2.5 million, depending on what happens at the budget workshop today. And that would be reserved, reserved for the next two years in, for operating expenses, just to kind of cover the shortfall in revenues. So I was thinking we could call that either fiscal year '23 and '24 operating reserves or maybe economic stabilization reserves, something like that. But the intent was to use that over the next, not, not this next fiscal year, because we already are supplementing with a lot of reserves for that, but to use it for fiscal year '23 and '24. And then that would bring us down to the 25 million target in reserves plus the American Rescue Plan money. Are there any questions on that?
Thank you Bonnie. Let's find out. Commissioner Smith?
Is there, is there a reason to designate these instead of just calling it reserves and being able to have the 25 million ultimately there? Do we need to designate these?
No, you don't have to. I mean, you could just call them general county reserves. You don't have to designate them, no.
And then will the, the worksheet that she sent us not long ago with current reserves where it has all kinds of designations, will those go away when we?
Yes, we would have to make a motion for those to go away because there was a motion to implement those. So yes, there would have to be a motion for those to go away if you want all of them to go away.
And that would be, then we would just have general county reserves when those go away?
We could, if, if that's what you want to do. We can do whatever you want to do.
So is there a reason to, to designate the, have these designations?
I liked it just because I, I, it reminds me the $10 million, we can't, we can't go below that $10 million mark and then the emergency. It just reminds me that this isn't, like, that's for an emergency. We've decided not to go below the 25 million and we would only go below that amount if it was an emergency. So that's, that's why we picked those, but if, if you want to just call them general county reserves, I don't think there's any reason we cannot do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Other Commissioners? Just, go ahead, Commissioner Toman.
Yeah. How does this fit in with what Treasurer Slaughter had recommended for investments? He said 25 million in 10 years or less. Those are kind of the long-term investment.
Yeah, so he had, he had, he had 10 million in the one to two-year investment. And, and those are staggered so that they mature at different times throughout the year, maturing more when we need the money. So this fits in, into play with his investment policy.
Thank you. Commissioners? Mr. Chairman? Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Lloyd.
Yeah, I would, I do like having some of the specific titles, I, just to be able to do that and we can move things amongst if we need to. I do want to speak in favor of the employee reserve concept. It's something actually Treasurer Slaughter and I have actually had multiple conversations of. And I think when we're in economic direns and you know, we go periods of time without being able to compensate or, you know, even give our employees a raise or even a small bonus, I think it's good to have that there just as an in case piece. I also, and this is probably a bigger picture to communication with the 8.224,631,000 in the infrastructure reserves or economic development reserves, which is, Bonnie, I'm assuming is most of the response.
Yes, that is the total amount of the American Rescue Plan money.
And I know with the last budget meeting, I know Commissioner Smith spoke in a concept and Jeff, if I, Commissioner Smith, if I, if I, if I misquote you or mistalk, please correct me. But you would question if that was something we should really put all into infrastructure and I would, I would also reiterate that. So that might be a discussion we need to have of where to best put that and how we want to take it, that look at the infrastructure. And I know that Christina and I have talked and is her liaison and I know one of the thoughts was to really maybe break a committee down to take a look at that ARP money and best ways to spend it, create some concepts. And you know, some of it definitely can go in the infrastructure, but I don't know if I'm, where I fill with the full 8.224, but that's a whole different discussion for a possible different day, but those are my general thoughts. And Jeff, did I misquote you? Am I out of your circle of trust?
I think you did pretty well.
Thank you.
Nope, you're still in the circle of trust.
Other comments? Commissioner Shanefield?
I agree with Commissioner Smith on this. I think that, I mean, for us to put guidelines on something that we can just vote to change the guidelines if something new comes up, doesn't it make a lot of sense to me? I mean, we have the money in reserves. We've already voted on the investment policy. We've already voted on the 25 million. I also agree with Commissioner Lloyd on that 8.224. And I think we need to have more discussion around that. But other than that, I mean, I really, I feel like we're, we're putting guidelines around things that don't really need guidelines and they've already, the 25 million's already been voted on and moved forward with, so. I mean, I think if we were to choose to use money for employee needs, then we would choose to use whatever we would need to at that time. And that, that's going to change with commission. I also don't love the idea that we would be putting guidelines around reserves that, you know, the five of us aren't going to be here forever. And other commissions would, and things change as we very well know with COVID over the last year. So I agree with Commissioner Smith on maybe just leaving them as general reserves and then having further discussion about that stimulus money.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Toman. Your hand was up first.
Well, I don't want to fall out of the circle of whatever.
Thank you.
But I do, I do, I think it's good to be able to see what we're thinking. If you throw it all into one pot, then we kind of forget what we were thinking about how we were going to use it. So I kind of appreciate Ms. Berry's recommendation.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Can I ask, so in the second one, in the second scenario, we're using the, the ARPA money as part of our 25 million in reserves?
No, the, the American Rescue Plan money is on top of the 25 million.
Okay, so 25 million is one, two.
Yes.
Then, and then we can, okay.
Yes.
All right, we didn't move on with, I see 15 million and that's 15 million, then there was recommendations. Thank you.
Yes, the 15 plus the 10 is, the 15 million plus the 10 million is 25 million and then, yes, and then number three, the 8.2.
Is on top of.
Yes, is on top of that.
Perfect, thank you.
Very good. Other questions? My turn?
Always your turn.
Always my turn. Now, let me share with you, first of all, we did receive our first installment of 4.1 or 2 million, one.
4.1.
It's already in the bank, it's invested. I don't really, you know, I, I know I pushed hard. I liked the thought. It's one-time money, opportunity impact, and of course, economic development has always been my push personally, but it doesn't have to be that way. That's just one vote. One vote, so, but anyhow, it's, it's hard for me to, to say there's 8.2 million there when we only got 4.1.
We will have the 8.2 by the end of the year and we base our reserves on what we're going to have at the end of the year.
Okay, very, and when you say end of the year, fiscal year?
End of the fiscal year.
Very good, because it'll be after January.
Yes, we, we anticipate collecting that other 4.1 next June. It's supposed to come a year later. So we do anticipate that in fiscal year '22, collecting that. And then when we budget the reserves, we budget it for the next fiscal year, for the end, end of the next fiscal year. So these would be amounts as of, that we project as of June 30th, 2022.
Very good. That's what I was hoping. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so the aspect with the rescue money. There's still a lot of conversations of where the edges are. They're not solid. And there's one person who works very closely, has been watching all of the information and weighing it, really trying to understand it, has contact with people that do, and that's our grants manager Christina. So my preference with it is to take the 8.2, set it aside and don't touch it until Christina is in a position she can come in and she can present what the sideboards are with it and tell us the best way to leverage it and the best way to use it. So my preference as Commissioners would be put the 25 million in a solid account. Because the one thing that was said this morning that hit me, we won't, we may not be here. No guarantees. And you heard me say before in another venue that I did not feel it's right that I should have to abide by other board decisions that I didn't get to make. You know, I should be able to have a say as how things are setting up. I believe anybody who comes after me should as well. So I'm, I'm in favor of putting the, all but the, I set the 8.2 aside until we can know what we can use it for and leverage it the best we can. And then put all the rest in one account and we can move it as we see fit. That's my preference over the experience of six years being a Commissioner and looking at this, if that means anything. So as I go through it and think about it, I think I heard Jeff and Lauren myself say, put it in the 25. I did not hear moving the eight separately. I think that was a new idea until, you know, and it doesn't, and keep in mind, I'd say throw it there. But remember, I'm only one vote. You as commission, when we find out how those edges are met and that type of thing, you can vote how to use it however you want. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I, I almost wonder if we should do it in something separate for that because it does have hard edges. You know, it's, it's got rules around it. We're going to have to pay attention to that. And there's also the potential for additional stimulus money that we may get in the future. So if that's all in one area, we can, Christina can help manage how we're going to use it and we can decide.
It'll be a project code basically, all under the project. Rob, come on in. Sorry, but. No, that's okay, but you know what, the, the agreement was is that when you got back, if there's something you really had some consternation over, we can revisit it, but we, we wanted to move on and continue, so. But yeah, you're exactly right, because when you talk about more opportunities, we've got the one, one billion from the state that the legislators are gonna, I just presented this morning nationally 38 billion more dollars with regard to, I'll just say, shoring up our workforce for depletion of coal, power plant, job, lost job losses, if that makes sense, in economic development. But you're exactly right. These, these things will have to be tracked. They're going to have to be audited. I think in the world of grants managing as Christina's, they should be projects accounts. But yet part of the res, reserve and set separately. So let me go back to my original thinking. We had three Commissioners, Rob, that said, let's take the 25 million, keep it together, don't, no categories. We have a couple Commissioners think differently. One suggestion that we're dialoguing is taking that rescue money until we know what the edges are. Set it separately, don't co-mingle it because it's going to have to be tracked after we know what the edges are and how it's used, more like a project coming out of grants management. But otherwise, take that money, set it aside. One reserve account that the commission can control. Roy and Commissioner Toymon, if you'd like to explain your part for counterpoints to Rob, what you're thinking?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll, you know, actually after discussion, I would be, I would be okay with going with the direction that was presented with just one lump concept. And I guess my big thing is just that maybe there's still some dialogue about the importance of keeping some concept of, even though if it's not in a specific category, that some of that reserves could be used for needed as an employee fund, because I do think that is an important piece of the puzzle.
Thank you. Commissioner Toman, anything you'd like to add?
I won't say anything more.
Circle of trust is shrinking, Mary.
Only collapsed.
You're on the outside of it.
I don't care what it's, I don't care what y'all say, it's still a circle of trust. Normal. Okay, with that, I believe first of all, if that's the direction we're going to go, I got to have a little help on a motion that will reorganize the previous reserves as designated?
Yes, I would make a motion to remove those designations. Would that be appropriate? And I would list them all off in the amounts as well. Do you think that's necessary, or do you think it would be appropriate to do it just in one lump sum?
I mean, you can, I think you can do it either way.
Okay.
Let's go with the short one.
With the total.
Okay, so what's your, what's your recommendation is that we entertain a motion that with our present reserve accounts, that we eliminate the designation of all the individual accounts totaling 34,128,495?
Sure.
Okay, I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Shanefield. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we need a new motion to establish a new reserve account.
Mr. Chairman, and I do, I do agree when, with the, there is value to doing them individually. Everything individually as it may change in the future.
Thank you. All right, so with that, the new motion will be to entertain our reserve account as one general reserve account of 34,128,495 and a reserve, specified reserve account for the American Rescue Recovery Money of 8.2 million, no, 8,224,633. Is that correct, Bonnie?
631.
631. My glasses were fogged.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Shanefield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Bonnie. Okay, we'll go back to, it is time to go to tab P at 115. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Bonnie. Tab one, P on 115 is Emergency Medical and Ambulance Service Contract and Second Extension with Sweetwater Medics. I don't see Sweetwater Medics on. They're not present. Nope. Did we receive their contract back signed, Sally? Okay, so we did receive it. Commissioners, I believe we presented them our contract our last meeting. And we did receive the Sweetwater Medics contract back, so at this point, any questions regarding the contract? It's identical contract, dollar amount, was identical, I believe, Commissioner Smith, from last year?
Yes.
Yes.
And just to speak to Castle Rocks, they were awaiting the contract for ground transports from Memorial Hospital, which was sent just this morning before they finalized their contract with us, so that is, it's forthcoming. It's just not here today yet.
Okay, very good. All right, so with the, let's do the emergent, let's do Sweetwater Medics first. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the, I want to read it right. It's the Emergency Medical and Ambulance Service Contract and Second Extension for Sweetwater Medics. Is there a motion to approve? As it was presented.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that, Castle Rock, point of order, Mr. DeLeon? We have, we know what that is because we sent it out to him last meeting. We know that amount. And can we? approve that contract pending their board signature without any, as long as there's no amendments on it or anything?
You can.
We can?
Yep, you'll approve it, approve for you to sign it, and it's, it will be executed upon their signature.
Thank you. Very good. Commissioner, understand that, commissioners? Commissioners, I'd like to go back to the previous motion and also have a new motion that you allow, this is a new motion, that you allow the chairman to please sign the extended contract for Sweetwater Medics.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, with Castle Rock, I guess the motion would be to entertain a motion to approve the Castle Rock second service contract and second extension and authorize the chairman to sign pending signature of the proper authority from Castle Rock. That work, John?
And allow the chairman to sign?
Huh? And allow the chairman to sign?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Okay, under other, first item is the catering permit from Red Feather Saloon. And to present that is our county clerk, Ms. Lane. Commissioners, I believe you may have received that as an email. So Ms. Lane, if you would please, floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Chairman Winley, commissioners. I'm looking for approval of a catering permit for Red Feather Inc. Doing business as Red Feather Bar and Packaged Liquor on June nineteenth for an event for the Ducks Unlimited at two twenty-nine Old Stoffer Road in Green River.
Okay. Would you share with us why this came in late?
This came in late as the Red Feather was going to the city to get approval and did not realize that they would also need county approval, county permit, since they were having the event on county, out in the county.
So my question would be, does it require their city's approval for them to take that permit out of the city limits before we approve the catering permit?
I do not believe, well, I usually do farcinate. I don't believe so.
Mr. Chairman, you can, I think you can approve the permit subject to them receiving all required approvals.
All right, very good. Thank you. That's where I was leading to. Thank you. All right, other questions for Ms. Lane? Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding this catering permit for Red Feather?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield?
I'll make a motion to approve the catering permit as presented and requiring the applicant to receive all other documentation and signatures from the city of Green River.
And authorize chairman.
And authorize chairman's sign.
Very good. Good motion. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion, commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Toman.
Is it a liquor permit or just a food permit?
It's a catering, not just the beer. So it could be wine, different types of alcohol.
You okay with that? Okay. I'd like to also, just before we vote on it, thank the commission for taking the time and acknowledging, putting this on our agenda. I think as people are buying businesses during this pandemic and are realizing what needs to be done if they want to do these caterings, and these caterings are good for our county, good for our people, we're gonna have to make some concessions on datelines to help these people out. And after all, that's why we're here. So I'd like to thank the commission for taking the time and support this being on the agenda and seeing to it we can help out the owner of Red Feather. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So much. Under other, that's our next move. And this is kind of a arena that if someone wants to bring something up and put it on the next agenda, we're sure welcome to or for good of the order. If there's anything you'd like to say, this is a good time. Commissioner Toman?
I'd like to have a discussion in executive session about how to advertise special notices like this. As we just talked, or special appointments, if we could do it in executive session.
Hang on a minute. I've got to check just a minute. John, did you hear that?
Yeah.
Is, is that possible under the Executive Board Open Meeting Act?
I, I mean, I can
Well, we could just make a decision to to do some notices on electronic media, but my concern is, do we bid it or just how would we know which?
Are you talking about the catering permits or electronic notices?
Electronic notice.
Okay, you know what? I have that under other to talk about that right now. So I'm in favor with you, what you're talking, I was, I was focused on catering permits, Mary.
Because it could be, we should do a notice.
Well, only if there's a hearing, only if there's a hearing.
No, no, just to let people know if they're interested in doing these kinds of things, this is the process.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
If you're gonna go for board appointments, this is the new process, that kind of thing, just notices.
Okay, all righty, very good. All right, we can talk about, that's, that's a good topic for under other. It is. That's just the consensus and we agree. So, all right, let's go ahead and bring that one up. And this is a good time. So go ahead and say what you would like to, Commissioner Toman, regarding, and you're talking any changes in notifications so people understand how we're operating.
Right, it wouldn't affect any of our current legal requirements to post the minutes in the financials. This would just be for special announcements to let people know in a mass way immediately that board vacancies or rule changes or how to apply for a committee assignment or something. Would it be okay to use electronic media? And then how would we decide how to do it? Are we gonna bid it out or just do it or what?
I, yeah, okay, good, good, good question. Very good. Some thoughts on that, commissioners? Go ahead, Lauren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that they have packages around advertising, so we could potentially have five slots with Sweetwater Now and five slots with Y O Four and know exactly what it's gonna cost. And then we would just use them as we went through them. And I think we could probably approach both of them and get some sort of an advertising deal.
We kind of already did it in our thank you thing. And there's quite a substantial difference.
Yeah, and I want to bring that up too, because we all need to be aboard with that as well. Here's, if I may reflect on the past a little bit, when the newspaper wanted to have us advertise in the newspaper, their marketing person came before us and presented, and they gave us a cost. We do that with anything outside of our contract for legal notices now with Green River, that they come before us. So with your thinking of with social media, if we talk with any of them, they're welcome to get on the agenda and come in and present a package for us to operate or to advertise through them. That's one way. So that's very possible. So if you talk with them, ask them to get on the agenda and present a package and, you know, and that type of thing. I do know through the clerk's office, there's several things dealing with government that are covered through her office through advertisement that we want to make sure that we, that Ms. Lane in the clerk's office has that information because we don't want to be spending money twice on things. So there's that to notice. The other aspect is, is I believe it's still to this day through our radio stations. I don't know if it's through social media as well, i.e. the network newspapers. But there are public service announcements that can go out. And they're free of charge, but they have some guidelines. Am I correct, Sally? Or Cindy for Olivia? Oh, hi, Olivia. For public service announcements through your newspaper, some, sometimes they're very reasonable or free, but they do have some guidelines. Is that correct? Yeah, I believe so. Okay. Yeah. And then also going back to I had one other point I was gonna share with you that we knew about. It'll come to me. But anyhow, there are opportunities, but they've got to come before us, present, and then we need to decide if that's how we want to support it and that type of thing. Yes. As is pointed out, and you're, you'll pick up as time goes on, I think Commissioner Lloyd and Commissioner Smith alluded to it earlier in the day is, is there is considerable savings if we can move to digital stuff for government work. But unfortunately, we have more small-town legislators in the state that are connected to small written newspapers. And the newspaper lobbying organization is very strong. They do contribute dollars to campaigns. And so it's a tough battle uphill, but it is a battle that continually going on and that is supported from WCCA to not eliminate anything in paper, but to give us options to go with written documents for legal notification or digital, you know, on a basis. I know last year, I will say this, Commissioner Toman, I don't think you were aboard at the time, but the WCCA was looking at costs of what our written advertisement through for a year. And for that year that I believe Sally did the work on and put the figures together, we spent nearly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, if I recall, on advertisement for legals and stuff throughout the county. And we know that that would be more down around the area of probably fifty thousand if we could have the option to do what we could for other sources. I remember what I was gonna say, Commissioner Toman, when the, we also have within our regulations or statutes or whatever for boards, Sally has to advertise those for two solid weeks in the newspaper, but we can get a price to put them on social media as well. It's just a matter of if those people are interested, they need to come in and present to us and let us know what they cost. And then as a commission of five, the majority will rule there. Would any other commissioner like to add anything? John, is there anything I missed that we need to be careful about?
No.
I would
Go ahead, Mary.
I would just like to make it clear, though, I totally support our written, our written media and our chosen advertiser for our minutes. I mean, it's supporting a local business. It is providing another source. But what I was looking at, the electronic or social media would be more for quicker announcements of things that could get out there kind of as a quick mass deal. I'm not trying to circumvent what we already have. We have whatever we have until legislature changes. And I support the good job you guys are doing for us at the Green River Star. So thank you.
Yeah, and you're exactly right, Commissioner Toman. We support the local newspapers. We support the jobs they provide. And at the same token, we still have some fiscal responsibility to our taxpayers and and that type of thing. So we have some tough choices to make in those arenas. But whatever decision we make, we're making what I believe is truly best for what our taxpayers want us to do. So you're right on target for those outside things other than what we are tied to statutally, statutorily for publications, come in and present, give us a package, how many times we can do it. And then we can decide what we want to go with, because I think that fits in that arena that Commissioner Lloyd's been talking about for few years. Am I correct, Roy? All right, anything else with that? Mary, do you want to add anything more?
Well, should we, should we invite them or post it? Or, you know, how do you let them know that you're gonna put them on the agenda so you don't?
Have they talked with you personally? Any of them?
Yes.
Then just invite them. Tell them what the process is. We don't have to, I mean, would we have to go out for bids, John? They can come in and present.
You do not have to bid except for capital.
Except for capital, that's what I thought. Go ahead, Roy.
As I say, I think it would be no different than like when the rocket miner would come and present to us for, hey, we want to do a veterans edition. I think either one of the, any of the, the social media outlets could come in and say, hey, if you'd like to do some of this emergency advertisement, public address announcement type things, this would be the cost. And I think they can come in and make a presentation. So what do they do with the rocket miner?
I agree. Did that help, Mary?
No, it doesn't help because I'd just like them to all equally have the opportunity. I know you have online newspapers too. So I would just say if there's a way for an online advertising, a time on our agenda where they could come in and do a presentation, so they're all have the equal opportunity.
Go ahead. Ms. Lane, you handle a lot of that stuff. Okay, let's do this. Let's do this. Commissioner Toman and any other commissioner would like to get with Cindy and do an invite for them to come and present, you know, and that type of thing, because we are interested in using our services. Am I correct, commissioners? That work, Mary?
Yes, I just want to keep it fair and above board and open and so they all have the opportunity.
I agree with you.
All right.
We all do. We all agree with you. Okay, anything else? Okay, anybody else for under other? Go ahead, Lauren.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lloyd and I had had discussion about potentially switching liaisonship just to better accommodate location and times for our schedules so that we can better accommodate those different entities. If we could put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Lloyd, you okay with that?
Yeah, it was actually, yeah, I totally am okay.
Okay, so if you guys will get with Sally, we'll put it on the agenda. I mean, it's not a big deal, but the commission needs to approve those board appointment, or those liaison appointments. Okay? Anything else under good of the order? We all got an email this morning regarding the thank yous and banners. And Sally did a good job of tracking things down and offered them to social media to put out there so more people would see the thank yous for the WCCA and the banner and that type of thing. And that's so she did, you got a price from, help me out, Sally, this morning. From Y O Four for how much? Do we know what Sweetwater Now will be?
Ninety-nine, that's what.
Ninety-nine? Okay, and then we also will be advertising where, or saying thank you where, Green River Star, very good. So commissioners, we're looking at, does anybody have any consternation with about three hundred dollars for advertising? Thank you
Well worth it.
Media for the WCCA. And then, of course, the thank you cards will go out as well. All right, very good. No consternation. Let's move forward. Okay, with that, anything else under other? All right, then with that, we'll go into executive session for legal. And under legal, I would like Dave Devis and John Deleon. Who else? I don't know. Well, we'll watch. Is Gary in the waiting room? Huh? Okay, if he happens to, he might, he may come up and that type of thing. So let's, we'll go into executive session with Mr. Devis and, and Mr. Deleon on update a legal and that type of thing. Do we need a break before we start, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, could I have a five-minute break?
Okay, five minutes. Well, let's take eight and start again at our famous ten two.
Eight minutes and thirty-seven seconds.
On ten-two, how's that?
Good.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion to go into executive?
Yes, I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Got a motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner